4:03 PM. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for being here, and thanks to those viewing remotely. Madam City Clerk, please call the row.
Councilwoman Sanchez.
Here.
Councilwoman Ibarra.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa.
Here.
Councilwoman Sharet.
Here.
Councilwoman Canas.
Here.
Councilwoman Flores.
Here.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Here.
And Mayor Tran.
Here, thank you. Moving on to public comments for closed session, do we have any?
We have one, Kimberly Calvin.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, mayor and council. Great to see you all here tonight to talk to you about Item C on your closed session calendar, and that is discussing processes, goals, and how you're going to move forward with evaluations, and I assume when you began to seek further or in the future city manager recruitment. I would like to say, first of all, that I'm not understanding, again, why it is that we continue to have to develop new processes when two years ago, we utilized Jacob Green and Associates to assist us with evaluating our city manager, city clerk, and city attorney, and that process went without a hitch. It was actually very successful, and we were able to give our three appointed team members the information and the feedback that they needed going forward. Not really sure what's the delay. We've been talking about this. It was being discussed before I left office, and I can definitely say that I emailed all of my colleagues to say that I did not believe that any incoming council members would be able to truly evaluate any of our staff members because they just took office not even one month ago. I'm going to suggest something that we should have done, and that is definitely give the former council, the three members who are not up there now, the opportunity to provide the evaluation, the information that should be considered. Anything less would only be you five that are still present on the dais to be able to give truthful information based on the last two years. Anything less would be cheating the city. It would not be giving information or feedback to the appointees who definitely need it at this point in time. So you should definitely consider how you're going to move forward when I know that the process for evaluation has been derailed since October. We all are aware of that, those of us who are on the dais, and I'm wondering exactly why. I have my ideas, and I was told that the city attorney was actually the one who had stalled that contract from coming forward in October, but what we need to do at this point in time is definitely make sure that we are providing our appointed staff with the correct feedback that they should have, and that, again, as I stated earlier, can only come from the council that was sworn in in the last two years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? Madam City Clerk? We will start momentarily. Thank you for your patience. Okay, we are back from closed session. Madam City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Mayor, council members, and members of the public, we do apologize for having an extended closed session today, although we had very important items to address. I do have reportable action on a number of the items that were discussed in closed session this evening. We're going to begin first by saying that Ashley Greenwich of the law firm of Goldman, Madeline, and Stratsman presented three cases to the city council. All three cases were approved for settlement, with the first one, Janet Aguiar, the settlement was approved, and the second case, the settlement was approved for $35,000, and in the third case, the John Phillips case, was approved for $150,000, and the Janet Aguiar case was approved for $125,000. Secondly, we had presentation by Amir Raza of the law firm of Lawrence Beach, Ellen and Choi. He represented on the case of Angelina Ortega and David Moot. Those two cases were also approved. Angelina Ortega was approved in the amount of $97,500 by a seven-to-zero unanimous vote. The second matter, in the Wood case, was approved for $299,500, but that vote was five-to-two, with council members Ortiz and Sharet voting no. Finally, we had a settlement presented by Victor Ware of the law firm of Graves and King. In that matter, that case was settled in the amount of $69,999 by unanimous vote. In the other cases, we received updates from our outside legal counsel, and that's all the reportable action we have, with the event that Item C will be taken after the open session agenda.
Thank you. All right, open session. Good evening, everyone, and welcome, and thank you for being here, and thank you to those viewing remotely. I call to order this joint regular meeting of the mayor and city council, and the mayor and city council acting as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of San Bernardino, the San Bernardino City Housing Authority, and as the San Bernardino Joint Powers Finance Authority at 5:30 PM. Madam City Clerk, please call the row.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Present.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Here.
Councilmember Sharet.
Here.
Councilmember Canas.
Here.
Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Councilmember Ortiz.
Here.
And Mayor Tran.
Here, thank you. We will now move on to invocation and pledge. Chaplain Nelson Glass from San Bernardino Police Department Chaplains will lead tonight's invocation. Please approach the podium at this time, and Gabriella Norris from Henry Elementary School will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please all rise.
If you could please remove your hats and bow your heads and pray with me. Gracious God, we ask for your blessings on Southern California, especially to our brothers and sisters on the West, who have experienced great fires, loss of life, loss of homes. We ask you, Lord, to protect the first responders as they continue to fight for the lives and the homes of people in the LA area. We ask you to bless our city as we go through our own struggles with the homeless, those who are struggling with drugs, and those who are struggling with mental illness. We ask you, Lord, to bless our mayor, that her positive attitude will generate a positive attitude throughout our city. We ask you to bless our chief Goodman, that his positive attitude in our police department will continue to help protect our city, our men and women in blue. Our first responders and all those in medical and health, protect them as they do their work for our health and goodwill. We ask you to bless our council people, that they fight not only for their own districts, but for all the districts in our city, and that they work together to build a better city, a stronger city, a safer city. We ask you that your grace continues upon all the citizens of San Bernardino, all the people of San Bernardino, that we may live in harmony and peace. We ask this always to your son. Amen.
Thank you, chaplain. Gabriella, are you here? No, okay, see, way back there. Councilwoman Ortiz, would you like to lead us?
Sure.
Thank you, councilwoman. We will now move on to a presentation. We do have one proclamation, and it's honoring Disabled American Veterans Chapter 12 for 100 years of service in the city of San Bernardino.[758.12][758.12](APPLAUSE). Can we have you all come up to the stage and join us? And, councilwoman, would you join me to the front? Hello? Hello, 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 testing, testing? Can you all hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Yes, yes. Hello, hello, everyone. Good, how are you? Good, good, good. I'm gonna snuggle right here. All right, we have a proclamation of the mayor and the entire city council honoring the disabled American veterans, Chapter 12, for 100 years of service in the city of San Bernardino. Whereas on January 12, 1925, Disabled American Veterans, DAV, Chapter 12, was established in the city of San Bernardino with the mission of empowering veterans to lead high-quality lives with respect and dignity. And whereas DAV Chapter 12 has dedicated the past 100 years to serving the veterans and families of the city of San Bernardino through unwavering commitment, advocacy, and community support, and whereas DAV Chapter 12 has organized and led numerous community initiatives, including the annual Thanksgiving turkey giveaway, which has helped over 350 families each year, ensuring that those in need can celebrate the holiday with a warm meal. And whereas the chapter's annual Christmas toy distribution has brought joy to over 250 families during the holiday season, reinforcing the spirit of giving and unity within the city of San Bernardino. And whereas in partnership with Home Depot, DAV Chapter 12 has distributed Christmas trees to over 200 veteran families, spreading holiday cheer and honoring the service of our local heroes. And whereas the efforts of DAV Chapter 12 have left an indelible mark on the city of San Bernardino, embodying the highest values of compassion, service, and dedication to both veterans and the broader community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of San Bernardino do hereby recognize this and honors Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 12, for its 100 years of outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to our community. We extend our deepest gratitude for the countless lives touched and the enduring impact DAV Chapter 12 has made throughout the past century, presented on the 15th day of January 2025. Okay. Snuggle in, big family picture. Yes, DAV Chapter 12 has a few words.
Thank you, mayor, city council, DAV, and members of the public. DAV Chapter 12 is proud to be a cornerstone of the San Bernardino community for over 100 years. Throughout this time, we have consistently adapted to meet the needs of our veterans and the community. During the COVID pandemic, our chapter became a place of refuge. We transformed our chapter into a local food bank, teaming up with Feeding America, distributing over 1,200 food boxes per month during the height of the pandemic, supporting our community during some of its darkest times. We also host impactful annual events like our annual turkey giveaway and Resource Fair. That event supports 350 families with $50 gift cards, food boxes, and more. Over 500 attendees benefit from the festive Resource Fair with meals provided for all. This is truly a community event. We have partnered with organizations like Wounded Warrior Project, Feeding America, NASA, the San Bernardino Vet Center, Leidos, and others. We appreciate the support of Congressman Pete Aguilar, Supervisor Joe Baca, and Mayor Helen Tran, who have helped distribute turkeys and other resources. Last year, we submitted a grant for $25,000 with Home Depot to get full Christmas tree setups. Home Depot has been a dedicated partner since our Veteran Exploration Garden launched in 2012, contributing over a quarter million dollars, $322,000 in funds and material. We are deeply grateful for Melissa and Jill from Home Depot 0610, San Bernardino, California, for their unwavering support. Yay, go ahead, give them a hand. December, we teamed up with San Bernardino Vet Center to create a festive Christmas wonderland for over 150 families, complete with toys, refreshments, and holiday cheer. Our chapter is committed to supporting veterans year-round as we host quarterly service officer sessions to assist veterans with their claims, benefits, and ensuring they receive the care that they deserve. In response to the recent fires, DAV Chapter 12 has become a hub for collecting donations for fire victims, partnering with key community leaders and organizations. We provide food, emergency resources, financial assistance. DAV National Disaster Relief Fund has mobilized the Los Angeles office to assist disabled veterans with their financial claims, forgive me. In addition, we're always exploring innovative ways to serve our veterans. Soon, we will launch our monthly wellness program in partnership with Club Chakra Veteran Wellness, featuring massage therapy, sound baths, yoga, and refreshments at the Veteran Exploration Garden. DAV Chapter 12 remains a pillar in our community, consistently adapting to the needs of our veterans and neighbors. We are deeply grateful for the city of San Bernardino's partnership. Thanks to your support, we invested over $500,000 in improvements, including fencing, air conditioning, flooring, and more. Looking ahead, we are thrilled to celebrate our 100-year anniversary with a time capsule and ceremony this spring. It will include a copy of our 25-year lease extension and a collection of the memories from our past century. We look forward to the next generation opening in 2050, reflecting a legacy and continued partnership with the city of San Bernardino. Thank you for supporting our mission to serve America's heroes. Here's to the next 100 years of DAV Chapter 12 and our shared commitment to this community. Who's house?
Who's house?
Yeah!
Big round of applause, a century, everyone! We now will move on to public comments. Oh, no, city manager update, I'm sorry. City manager, do you have any updates?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I would like to introduce Jeff Cross, Public Information Officer, to provide the city manager update.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. Before I start my formal report, in light of the fires that we had last week in Southern California and the damage that they did, this week in San Bernardino, we had two major fires. We had a major structure fire on Monday night off of G Street, and this afternoon, we had a 34-acre fire on Little Mountain that could easily have gone in any direction and threatened neighbors. I'd like to thank who's not here today because he's still up on Little Mountain, Chief Jaeger and all of the men and women of the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District for moving and mobilizing all the resources these last three nights to keep San Bernardino safe. With that, I have some additional good news. We just learned that the city will be receiving a $14 million grant to install an EV charging network throughout the city. This grant came from the Department of Transportation and will install and provide 101 EV chargers, including the fast chargers, at 15 different locations in the city, including parks, community centers, libraries, and downtown parking locations. San Bernardino is one of only six organizations in the state to receive such a grant, and the only one in Southern California. This was a competitive grant, and we're extremely excited. The grant writers, this was done by our grants team, and they dubbed this "From Desert to Oasis" because we are very underserved in EV charging stations, and 101 additional chargers will really make a difference, so we're very appreciative to the Department of Transportation and the hard work of our grants team. Our encampment cleanups continue. Just last week, we did an encampment cleanup in an alleyway near the intersection of Baseline and D Street. There were 19 tents, and we are pleased to report that of those 19 tents, 25 individuals were receptive, open, and accepted services, and we also were able to clean up 37 tons of trash. This is over by the old Smart and Final, if you know that area, and so this marks the fourth cleanup that we have done since the injunction was lifted, following Parasillo Park, Wildwood Park, and Bobby Vega Park, and we do have another cleanup scheduled for If you'll see what the, this is what it looked like before our Public Works crews and partners went in, and this is what it looked like following the cleanup, so we're very pleased that that had took place. Speaking of homeless, our point-in-time count is set for Thursday, January 23. If you have not signed up, we are looking for volunteers to get an accurate count. This is very important that we get an accurate count because this figures in funding formulas and grant applications for us to, for us to provide services and other things for our homeless individuals, our unhoused individuals. It is early in the morning, and we ask that people get there at 5:15 in the morning, but it is definitely worthwhile and an important role that our citizens can play, our residents can play, to help address the unhoused situation in San Bernardino. Our Public Works Department is now in Phase Two of a sign, replacing missing signs and outdated signs. This time, mostly in the 5th Ward, they will be replacing approximately 900 street signs as well as stop signs in the city. It's one of those things, we hear about roads, we hear about streets, we hear about trees, but wayfinding and safety, it's, street signs go right along with those, so we're pleased that Phase Two, and this is part of a citywide effort, to replace street signs throughout the city. This morning, we celebrated the grand opening of San Bernardino's first Yoshinoya Beef Bowl restaurant. They opened actually about four weeks ago, and we are very, in fact, Sam Faria, who's the regional manager for, or the director of operations for Yoshinoya, told us that without doing any advertising on social media or coupons, which they often do, in the four weeks that since they have opened, they were number one, and number two, and number three each week in the entire chain. He attributes that to people from Los Angeles and the LA area who have moved out here and missed the Yoshinoya, and, but they're very pleased with the success in the four months since they first opened, and look forward to more success as they start advertising and word starts getting out. They're over on Highland Avenue, so please stop by if you get a chance. With the passing of 2024, a lot of our boards and commissioners' terms expired, and so we are putting out a call for people to apply to serve on a board or commission. It's a very important role that people can play. The amount of work, the amount of input, the expertise and passion of our commissioners' play is absolutely vital to the functioning of the city. So if somebody is interested, we encourage you to go to the city's website and apply online so that we can consider you to serve. There are quite a few, in fact, pretty much every board and commission in the city now has at least one opening, so we look forward to filling those with people who have new ideas and would like to share their opinion in the workings and the future of San Bernardino. And finally, on February 1st, we're a couple weeks away from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, is the Lunar New Year celebration. We will be ringing in the Year of the Snake, and if you have not been to this event at Court Street Square, you are missing out. There is music, there is dancing, there is food, there are activities, and there are dragons. It's great for the kids, and I definitely hope that you can make it on February 1st, that's a Saturday, from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comments. At this time, public comments will be heard for items on the open session and items not on the agenda. To address the city council, everyone must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk. Only those speaker cards turned into the city clerk will be allowed to address the city council. No late cards will be accepted. Each person should state their name for the record. Once again, if you require Spanish interpretation, we do have an interpreter on site. Please raise your hand at this time to indicate you would need interpreting assistance. In addition, we have interpreting listening devices available in the back. In addition, we have interpreting listening devices available in the back.
En este momento se escucharán los comentarios públicos para artículos de agenda y artículos que no están en la agenda. Para dirigirse al consejo municipal, cada individuo debe completar una tarjeta de orador. Se debe completar la tarjeta de orador y entregarla a la secretaria municipal en este momento. Solo aquellas tarjetas de orador entregadas a la secretaria municipal podrán dirigirse al consejo municipal. No se aceptarán tarjetas tardías. Cada persona debe indicar su nombre para el registro. Si necesita interpretación en español, tenemos un intérprete presente. Por favor levante la mano en este momento para indicar que requiere servicios. También tenemos aparatos disponibles para escuchar la junta en español. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Gracias. Madam City Clerk, I believe we have 21 speakers tonight?
We have 22.
22, 22 speakers tonight. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please call their names.
Georgia Al Palazzo, Mike Hartley, Barbara Sky, Russell, last name starts with the D, Erica Hernandez, Chad Keevil, Victoria Sanchez, Eric Marquez, and Amy Zing.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Al Palazzo, Mayor, City Council Members, and City Manager. I am here to support Mr. Lee and Amy in their great humanitarian effort to renovate and open up space at their properties on 4th Street to help the victims of the fires who need shelter. Mr. Lee and Amy are business people in the center of downtown San Bernardino, next to the Old Fox Theater. This property is a dorm building of 130 rooms. Each room has a bathroom. Each room can accommodate two to four people. We are no strangers to fires. My brother, Ruben Juarez, a city employee for 35 years, lost his home in the Panorama Fire. All of his family, my nephews and nieces, walked away only with the clothes they were wearing and lost everything else. We have an opportunity to help our neighbors in ALA County who are experiencing a similar situation that we all know too well. By the grace of God, it could have been San Bernardino again. Mr. Lee and Amy are showing great leadership and generosity to our neighbors to the east Altadena. San Bernardino is an old city. We have been recognized in the past as an all-American city because of the great people in the past, as Mr. Lee and Amy, who are volunteering to make a tragedy that words cannot describe a little less painful by their gesture to the many who are suffering. Mr. Lee and Amy speak of improving the image of San Bernardino. They are going to try to have the people who will renovate the buildings be local people, create jobs for our community, people in San Bernardino. I will support any business in San Bernardino that wants to make a positive difference. I was invited to a banquet about 10 days ago. I spoke to the Chinese-American Chamber of Commerce. They sat me next to the President. They said, "Mr. Palazzo, say a few words about your vision." I said, "There are many friends in this room, but Mr. Lee, there's a lot of opportunity in San Bernardino. If you would like to help our city grow, please think of San Bernardino." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Well, good evening. Russell Dagnan with Operation New Hope. First, I want to give thank you, Mayor Tron, for your leadership. But Dr. Ortiz, congratulations. Kim, huge congratulations. Mario, hope to get to know you, but I know their hearts and I know their work, so I'm happy to see you both up there. I'm here to just give a quick update. I was MIA for a while. I coached a Pop Warner team during football season, so it was tough to come on a Wednesday night during theirs, that's my excuse. But I do want to give Mary and her leadership has been phenomenal. Mary, honestly, I know you've got a great team, but it starts with the leader. If you haven't got to know Mary, she's doing an excellent job. She's more behind the scenes now, and Helica has really come on board and given a lot more direction with the VIP. We had the City Workforce Contract, and I know Mary with Ariel and some turnover, but Gabe, you guys are doing an excellent job. I really appreciate all the support. It really helps. So I do want to give some updates. I don't know if you guys remember, there was a City Workforce Grant that was out there. Operation New Hope was one of the funders. It ended in October, I believe. We were contracted for 50 youth to serve. We hit 71. So when you contract with Operation New Hope, we exceed those numbers. Out of 71 students that were enrolled, they was ages 15 to 30. Majority were the 18 to 30-year-old range, but out of 71, 74%, 52 of them were employed afterwards. The other ones are in school or doing something productive. Another update I want to give is more around the VIP strategies. Our Chief Goodman is doing an excellent job. Jason King, Lieutenant King, deserves a huge shout out. I believe you guys know this, but we hit the end of the year 100 less shootings from the year before. I forget what the percentage is, but the last two years, shootings have gone down, and that's a testament of, yes, the VIP program and collaborative efforts. I'm getting short on time, so I want to be quick. But our VIP outreach last year, we had 168 students complete that program. That's cohorts of, that complete a 10-week life skills and leadership development, restorative justice, getting in the community, giving back. Currently, this year, starting July 1st, we have 61 that are enrolled. So we'll definitely hit the mark of hitting our 100 goal. We have, the weekly mobile shower, guys, with caps, is at Operation New Hope every Monday and Friday. It sounds like you guys are expanding that, so we're gonna lose one day. I would like to not lose one day. But we are also adding medical services there, starting in February. We had a great Jingle Jam where we had 52 families came in, 42 free haircuts, three seconds left. Thank you. Let's keep the positive movement.
Thank, thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Barbara Sky, Verdmont. I'm here not just to talk about Verdmont, but the whole foothills in the city of San Bernardino. We've all seen the fire and the destruction in Los Angeles, and we've all seen the horror stories of the water shortage. Well, we're kind of in the same boat here in Verdmont, and I'm not familiar with what goes on in the rest of the foothills. But we don't have the water pressure past Myers Road. And we've, you've put 1,000 more homes upon us since 2003. In 2003, I was standing on the corner of Palm and Belmont at 1:40 in the morning, and I asked the police officer if it was really mandatory to get out. And he said, "No, but if you're told to evacuate and it's mandatory, we're not getting you out of here. There's too many people up here." And since that time, look at all the homes that have been added up there. I'm asking you to do a moratorium until you fix the infrastructure on the north end of this town. We have basically Palm, University that's going to be under construction, Little Mountain, and Northeast Street. And all those people across the foothills are going to be using those same streets that we're trying to get out of Verdmont. There's a new housing tract up there, VFR, GFR, and it's very nice homes and stuff. And he's putting up a 2 million gallon water tank up on the foothills, up above halfway up the mountains. My concern is, why wasn't that put in before there was any wood put on the ground up there? The water pressure is very low up there. You have to pump the water up there. And most of Verdmont, up above Verdmont and Myers Road, is all pumped in. And it doesn't have anything to do with the electricity. There is pumping stations, but if those generators go down, we're not going to have any water. I think we have the best fire department that we've had in a long time in Southern California, but we need to give them the tools that they have to work with. And I think we need to look at what's going to happen, that we'd be in the same situation. Their last fire was in 2003. The fire before that was in 83. We saw that they lost 300 homes on North Park. We don't know what's going to happen in Verdmont, because you're going to have so many people, it's going to be just like paradise. We're not going to be able to get out. So think and consider, please, a moratorium on any houses that you're going to pass through the planning process at the moment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor Tran and City Council. My name is Erica Hernandez. My family and I lost our home and three beloved dogs to the Edgehill Fire on August 5th, 2024, in Little Mountain. That day, four of our neighbors also lost their homes and fur babies as well. Looking back, it was the most devastating day of our lives, and it's something that I would never want to happen to anybody. Los Angeles, a place my husband and I called, called home for many years and grew up in, has thousands of residents experiencing the same devastation. It truly breaks my heart. Unfortunately, our small community here in San Bernardino knows this feeling all too well. I'm standing here today as President of the Shannon Hills Neighborhood Association to be a voice for everyone in our community. It has been six months of emotions, support, love, and healing, and now it's time to rebuild our beautiful community of Shannon Hills. This neighborhood tucked in a little pocket in San Bernardino has been here since the 1950s. Our home since, our home that was built in 1974, the home that is now gone today. It is full of nature, peace, beautiful sunsets and sunrises, and neighbors who looked out for each other every single day. I remember the day after the fire, visiting what was left of our home and street and meeting some of you. You offered your heartfelt condolences and let us know that you were there when we needed you. Well, I'm here today to let you know that we are now needing you. As mentioned earlier, we are in the planning stages of rebuilding and are now ready to submit our plans to the city for approval. Every single one of us is either in a rental home or staying with relatives until our home is ready to move into. As each day passes, our insurance money is quickly being depleted. My ask of you, Mayor Tran, City Council, and Mr. Gabriel Elliott, Director of the Community Development and Housing Department, is that you help us through this process. We need your support to expedite the approval of our rebuilding plans with the San Bernardino City Planning Department so that we can return to our homes and begin to fully heal. Your assistance will make a significant difference in our lives and help restore the sense of community that Shannon Hills is known for. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much.
In light of what she's saying and what Ms., Ms. Barbara has said too, I know that in August of 2024, the Governor declared a state of emergency for the Edgehill Fire. And what I was wondering is, if you guys can look into whatever type of either additional funding can come to the city, looking for coverage over, you know, building costs, permit costs, and then extend to, to our community what we can in that capacity, and if possible, bring us back what that means, as well as looking into as, you know, any potentials with, with water, with whatever we have. Because what, what they're saying is true, and the reality is here. So if possible, Madam City Manager, or any of you, just see what the state of emergency would allow us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Chad Keevil. I live in Ward 6, off of Macy and Roosevelt. I'm just coming out tonight to ask for assistance with getting the potholes repaired around the street near me. Within one property either side of me, there's a, there's a heck of a lot of potholes. I counted, I stopped counting at 20 earlier today. I'm just hoping to get some assistance with that. I'm grateful for Public Works when they do come out, but like I said, it's a, there's a, it's a minefield pretty much around there. I am, if you all need help, when somebody comes out, they want to show me how to do it, they got materials, I'll do it myself if need be. I'm just hoping to get that fixed before the rains start coming down. It's going to tear up the street a lot more than it already is. Figured it'd be cheaper to the city that way than let it get torn up and have to do more extensive repairs than they would otherwise. So that's all I got for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Victoria Sanchez, and I'm here to speak with you today regarding the fires that have been occurring in our city, more specifically, the Little Mountain Fire that occurred earlier today, and also our city's preparedness for a natural disaster. So first off, I'd like to thank our fire department and our emergency responders for quickly responding and containing the fire that occurred today, because as you know, the winds that we've been experiencing, it could have gone, it could have been devastating. And so, thank you. Other than that, I do want to note that this, these fires, they're a stark reminder of our city's history with being exposed to wildfires. And so this really brings me to ask, is our city truly prepared for a devastating natural disaster like the events that have been unfolding in Los Angeles? And so I just want to let that sink in. Do we have comprehensive evacuation plans for our city and our community members in place of such emergencies? So another thing I want to point out is, although we appreciate the developments, you know, specifically even Ward 5, and we appreciate it as our community, Palm Avenue remains very congested, you know, as some of other community members have, have stated. So with that being says, said, this really just raises concerns about, again, evacuation routes. What does our infrastructure look like? And so I just want to pose a critical question for you guys. Has the city really considered whether our infrastructure, again, can support a large-scale evacuation in case of a wildfire or natural disaster? Will residents really have the means to escape? And again, we've seen this in Los Angeles, it's heart-wrenching. And so I just want to pose that question. Other than that, I would love to thank our City Manager, Rochelle Clayton. Thank you so much for all that you do. I really want to highlight your work and really ensuring that ARPA funds were not sent back to the federal government. So thank you. Your due diligence has really allowed funds to stay within our city, and our city deeply needs those funds in our community. So thank you so much for your work. Truly appreciate you. However, I can't ignore the fact that for three years, our City Council and our Mayor have failed to allocate these funds to, effectively to our city. So I, I just want to say it is disappointing that such an opportunity to uplift our community was nearly lost. And so thank you again, Rochelle. I appreciate you. All right.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Mayor Helen and the City Council. My name's G. Lee. We own the property in downtown San Bernardino. So we've been sitting here for 10 years, actually. We want to make a good improvement for the property, for the city of San Bernardino. We try to, at this time, we try to bring the Digital Media Center plus Convention Center to downtown San Bernardino. Make use of Fox Theater at the Convention Center and the other office building at the Digital Media Center. Try to hire local students to train them to become online influencer and media producer here locally. And during this, you know, fire damage disaster time, we try to use our dorm building, which have 130 rooms. Each room has a bathroom. Use them like quickly molding above that. You know, it was damaged by the trespassing people. We can finish the renovation in three months. We try to bring the fire victim, you know, people to temporarily leaving there, stay there for two, 18 months or two or three years, let them have time to recover their home. So we do need the city help to collaborate for supporting in like Edison City Permit Approval and Inspection Process, make it available to accommodate for the fire victim. So at tenants, I try to do the contribution in this time, make our effort to make San Bernardino looks good, and also try to, maybe in the future, bring 200, 300 EV frying programs. So bring money to improve not only our property, but also culture more. But no matter what we are doing, we do need the City Planning Department's support. We do need Building Department's support. We need the City Manager as well, Mayor, City Council. council support. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for everybody.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Council. My name is Georgia. I'm here today to speak about the animals, as I always do. This week is the one-year anniversary of Sue. Hopefully, you all remember when I came here last year and told you about Sue, who was left to languish and die in her kennel. We took her out of the shelter. It was awful. I want to bring attention that nothing has changed. Kennel number A, kennel ID number A574241, female dog that was returned to owner back in December. She was obviously pregnant, returned to owner, pregnant, found again astray, brought back into the facility, and she had a green and bloody discharge, actively in labor. They left her in the kennel overnight, and they found her dead with a puppy in a kennel, because we're cruel and shameless and disgustingly inhumane in this facility, and nothing has changed in the years I have been coming here to tell you what's going on. You are aware, and you still do nothing. Pay attention. We have lawsuits in Riverside, and we have a lawsuit also that they lost in San Diego Humane Society, because they're releasing cats in the street, they're dumping them. And we don't have any cats in our shelter. Where are all the cats, Ms. Watson? And that's against the law, and San Diego lost. Riverside is being sued for the same, and I can promise you, it will come to our city. You will be sued, because it is a violation to California law. Our intervention is gone. I warned you. She was thrown out into the lobby with all her supplies, and she submitted her resignation and quit. We have no safety net right now for our citizens, and it's nothing more than sabotage, because she quit because of the conditions and the way she was treated by our staff and leadership. And she's gone. Best Friends Animal Society needs to get out of our city. We have a contract that was signed the same time they brought this director to our city and have wrecked havoc in our city. Throwback that $1,000, we don't need it. Our city is drowning in strays and dead animals, and they're bringing it to our city. We haven't had enough. Please, change. And can we get something updated for our $10 million a year? This is from October of last year already.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hi, everyone. Good evening and dear mayor. My name is Amy. I come with Mr. Gili, and we work together. We have a business here, like 398 Carl Street. We have like a Fox Theater. And this time, I'm so hurt by my heart, because bad news last week. I heard so many people lose home, but we have a property in like 340, like Fourth Street in this city. We have 130 rooms, but we want to donate to the home, this time, lose home, who is it? We have a property, we want to help them, but we need a little short time, like two months or one month later, we can fix it, because we have our own construction company, we can fix quickly. But we need the city mayor to help us, or support us to get like a license to fix it quickly. And we give to the people serve, we just service people. Also, we have like a restaurant, so we can do like, you know, when people this time lose home, lose everything, and we can invite them to come here, like give to them free location, free like the room, just we wanted to do. We need the mayor to know this, and also later on, we want to make this city great, because like we have a Fox Theater, we can like one, like a, like a event, we can do like invite the people, 1,200 people even one time. So I just want everybody to know us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Okay, my time started. So I am here because I missed the last two meetings, and I am so deeply sorry of missing, well, the swearing-in and about six hours of meeting minutes. I'm just so ashamed. But last time I was here, I talked about the San Bernardino Symphony Guild, and I just want to say, the Afterglow for the 14th concert, for Christmas concert, was excellent. And also, Santa Claus made an appearance. I also noticed he was accepting brides to take people off the naughty list. I won't snitch if you won't. And what else is there? I know I had something else. While the symphony is still wonderful, and the guild is still open to new members, and I'm not sure if I'm allowed to say any of this. Seriously, I did not ask for permission to talk about the symphony, so please do not take my word as me representing the group. I'm just doing this as an outside person. Okay. Oh, also, for all of you who haven't seen me, I'm Eric. Thanks, hi. Yes, I also have a website, apparently. I wonder what's on it. And hmm, I'm starting a nonprofit group with a few other people called the People of San Bernardino. We hope to be a real group soon. We don't exist legally. But we hope to bring our communities in the San Bernardino, well, greater San Bernardino area, area, but specifically San Bernardino, together as a group of people who can get along and actually be neighbors. My department's, well, we're referring to it as the Community Association and Community Outreach Department. I'm not sure how official that is, mostly because the entity doesn't exist, so I'm just talking out of nowhere. Also, I got business cards. They have my website on it. Oh, I applied to one of the commissions, Parks and Rec, oh, the garden! Yes, this Parks and Rec Department manage a garden on the corner of Pedley and 6th Street. Now, the plumbing needs work, and I would really appreciate it if someone could look into that. I'm not well-informed enough to comment any further. But I would love to be on the commission for the Parks and Rec, it might be a committee or board, I don't remember. But I'm also open to other positions, but I also really love the symphony, I think. I don't think I like going to concerts, actually. My cat's still named Frederick, and her full name's next time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Mike Hartley. At the last council meeting, I made a comment regarding San Bernardino becoming a sanctuary city. And the next day, on a Facebook post, somebody called me a racist. They also said that the council should ban me from ever speaking again. They also said that I was lucky that they missed that, because they were here earlier, and if they would have been here, there would have been a problem, which I took as a threat. First of all, racist the word. We are watering down this word so much, it's starting to mean nothing. I'm not a racist. I know I'm not a, my wife knows I'm not. My employees and people who I have worked with knows I'm not a racist, but what pisses me off the most is we're watering down that word. There is racism, and there are racists. There's the KKK, there's the skinheads, there's the white supremist. I don't belong to any of those groups. And the SOB that wanted to call me a racist is ignorant. Second, when I think about what I said, had nothing to do with race, it had to do with people being in this country illegally, which is against the law, period. There's just no two ways about it, and we need to face those facts. And if I have to explain to this guy what illegal means, I will. But the part about the threat, I am lucky that he left earlier, there would have been a problem. After looking up his profile, he was only 10 years younger than I was. Now, if he would have been 20 years younger than I was, I'd probably get into a gym. But I just want everybody to know what I said at the last council meeting had nothing to do with race. And I know you guys would not become a sanctuary city because of the ADUs, the states telling us to have ADUs. You wouldn't go against the federal government and become sanctuary city. So I wouldn't worry about that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Malibu. I just wanted to congratulate Kim on your new position up there. I've worked with you in the community, I know you're going to do a great job up there, and thank you for reaching back out to me as well. Congratulations as well to Dr. Treasure Ortiz, you know, your comment to the young lady that was up here talking about the houses. I'm looking forward to some empathy coming from up there. That was right on time. Sometimes you guys just sit up there just like deers in headlights, like huh? Say something to somebody. We're here looking for direction and guidance, and I just love that you jumped in there and said that, Treasure. Thank you so much. And Maria Flores, congratulations to you as well. I hope that you guys take this year to work together. You guys do really great when you work together. My true, one of the things I'm up here to say as well is I'm not sure why we haven't hired on Rochelle Permanent. Why are we playing with that position? She's done a great job, she's still doing a great job. But one of my concerns is about our legal team. I think they need to be fired. Several times, people have stole millions of dollars from the city, and they just walk off. We need to start holding people accountable. When millions of dollars is being stole from the city of San Bernardino's taxpayers, and you guys are, oh, just fire them, just don't give them no money, that's not, that's not okay. Charges need to be filed when people be stealing, I don't care if it's $100,000, to tell you the truth, but when we're talking about millions of dollars being stole, where's the legal team to say, hey, what's going on? We have had a new person who I've met, I may have said her name wrong, I'm sorry, but we met and we talked, and I think she's an awesome person, and for her to go in and discover like almost $2 million, you know, $900,000 to be given to a company when the VIP program was never to be given, it was like a reimbursement program. So David just got fired, and that was just it. He should have been prosecuted as well, and I don't think it's too late. And I think that whoever this next organization is, if they got $2 million of VIP money, which is Violence Intervention Program money, when we do have a high crime level in the city of San Bernardino and a lot of violence in my community, I don't find that to be okay. I find that to be disgusting, and we need to file charges on people that are stealing millions of dollars. And I thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
The next speakers, Regina Correia, Kimberly Calvin, Sylvia Lopez, Les, Tia Johnson, Victor Beecham, Thomas Burpee, Omar, last name starts with an R, B, Russ, Ronnie Miller, and Jose Mendoza.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kimberly Calvin here, happy to be amongst you all. I wanted to definitely thank Public Works team and all of you who are constantly working together to make sure that the city continues to move. I wanted to discuss the signs that are going to be put up throughout the city, and I was wondering, are any of those signs going to be the signs that we need so that our street sweepers can go down the streets? We've been waiting on those signs. We had an agreement with BURTEC, and we were going to be investing and making sure that those signs were being posted so that folks would know not to park on our streets when it is street sweeping day. And so, I'm really wondering if somebody can get back to the community and let us know, when are those street signs going to be placed? And I saw the list of signs for Ward 5, and can we also be informed on how fast is that going to take, how long is that going to take, and when will we be moving through all of the other wards? So the gentleman that came up and discussed Macy and 6 on those potholes, those are some potholes that I know that Public Works have been out to take a look at, and so I'm wondering if we can definitely get back to community and street paving, when we're going to be paving our streets, that the platform that we have now adopted so that community can be able to see when their streets are going to get paved. You can see now how critical it is in some areas. As a matter of fact, that particular street has been well over 35 years since it has been paved, that entire neighborhood. But thank you guys, though, for all the work that you are doing. I know that you're working as fast as you can, and maybe the council, and the new elected council member can make sure that that is definitely a focus of his. I wanted to also say thank you. I'm happy to see that Item 23 and 27, the work to Gutierrez Park and Encanto is on the agenda. I know that that was a long time coming, and so grateful that Ward 6 gets to see that work as well. So the cleanups is what I want to also talk about tonight, is that the cleanups that are taking place throughout the city, wonderful thing, but where are those folks going? I know that the majority of those that are living inside, and I understand that Meadowbrook may be next on the list for cleanup, I think that there is probably just as many people in Meadowbrook as there are, were in Paris Hill Park. And so, we know that if those folks are not taking the two-week voucher, as it has been shared, that people, some folks just don't want housing, which I don't believe that people don't want housing. I think that there are different types of housing that should be created in order for everyone to be able to have the type of space that's needed. But what I see in Ward 6 is that folks are just really being pushed off into different communities, and they're going more a bit underground, which is very, very unsafe. So we do need to find some immediate structures that we can house folks. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
My name is Tia Johnson. I am the founder and co-owner of Three Little Bluebirds Downtown on 4th and F Street. I love my little area, but we need some lights, guys. This has been a long time, I've been there four months already, and every day I've had to question my closing hours because it is completely dark. I've shifted my hours for my boutique, which, by the way, is doing extremely well, but it's cutting my time short with my clients or my customers by having to close at 5:00 because it's too dark. And on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, the Junior Foundation is actually holding their events across the street, and as I'm leaving those events, there's tons of people, and it's so dark, you can't see people crossing the streets. So that needs to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed as soon as possible. We have three women-owned businesses in that building, and we're going to have another three additional women-owned businesses upstairs, and those are going to be therapist offices, over 18 therapists are going to be upstairs in my building, and those are women-owned, sorry, women-run offices as well. We don't need to be walking out in the dark at night, and so that needs to be addressed. The other issue that needs to be addressed as soon as possible, and I watched it today, is the traffic light on 4th and F Street. It just, it doesn't even blink. There's no stop sign, there's no indication as to whether you're supposed to go through it, whether another car is to, meaning it's a cross, it should have a cross light that should be working, and it's not at all. It just, I watched cars run through it today several times. There's going to be an accident, and then you guys will be saying that I told you so. I mean, honestly, it needs to be fixed, like immediately. Otherwise, they're going to come through my window. It's that bad. So that's my complaint, but I love y'all. Okay, all right.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Madam City Manager, can you check that? Because when I came through the other day, I saw crews working on the lights, and they were flashing, so I know especially in the evenings, you know, when people are patrolling at 2:00 in the morning, we don't want anybody to get hit. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Lopez. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I came, I guess, to ask questions. I wanted, I wanted to ask, what plans does the city have for all these old structures in San Bernardino? San Bernardino has a lot of potential. Are you planning on working with developers to bring the city up? This is the next city that needs to grow. Fontana's grown, Rialto's grown, people are going up the hill. That's grown and populated. What plans do you have here for this city and for affordable housing as well? Those are important things. And you already mentioned that what you're doing for the homeless. I just passed by the park today and they're camping again. So where do you take them? Are there facilities where they're getting mental help as well? I also like to go and listen to other cities, the deficit that San Bernardino has. And then I heard the lady say they've stolen many members here. San Bernardino needs money. How, how is that happening? And what are the plans to bring that deficit down that you guys have for the city and bring this city up? So much potential. We need affordable housing. The real estate is great in this area, but when we bring them through these streets or downtown, it looks abandoned. It, it's, it looks like a ghost town here. So they, you do need lights, how the lady said, but that's my concern. What plans for all the abandoned structures, so much potential, do you have for the city to grow? I just want to make that comment and maybe you guys already are working on something like that? I don't know, but, but that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Les. When are we going to, when are we going to bring back the Zoom for public comments? I hear that we have a grant team. We should have had the grant team write the grant for the City Hall building instead of letting some city manager trying to take out a loan to fix up the building. That was crazy. I see Mario, just to, just to let you know, I see Fred in your ear. Don't let his negative and crook ways rub off on you too. And I noticed that you guys switched seats. Councilwoman Calvin was actually trying to have y'all switch seats, but now y'all switched it. And you know, it still ain't going to make no difference. It's still four people that's crooks up there. So the other, the other people, Ms. Kim, Treasure Ortiz, I rock with y'all. I don't know about everybody else. What else? Uh, oh yeah. And we still need to recall Theodore and Fred. My personal opinion, until we do that, then that's when things are going to change, you know? They, it's a voting system. And Theodore and Fred has control over Sandra and Juan, and sometimes Helen as well. But I see Mario, he on the team. But I noticed that Mario was more on Helen Tran's team. But we're about to see how this works because Fred is in his ear. So we don't know who team he about to play on. The other thing, we all witnessed the fires. And I think it's crazy that these insurance companies are pulling out on these people. You guys really need to hit the ground and find out why they trying to, why are they doing that? And if they don't want to insure these houses for fire protection, they don't need to do no business in California. We just need to boot them out. And then my man, Mr. Lee, he's the guy in Theodore Sanchez Ward that we had to help the people out of that building, that it was feces on the floor. It was a, a baby got left behind a garbage can over there. People were shooting at the building. People was getting charged rent just to live on the floor. Mr. Lee, he's in your ward, Theodore? But he talking about he wants money? We shouldn't help him with anything. Mr. Lee, the guy in his suit back there, that man. You know, Chief know, the police officers know, we all went up in that building. That was, that building was ridiculous. That, that, it was an old police station too. So he just messed up history with that, with that. But let me stop. Oh yeah. If we, with the empty buildings, I know Rancho was giving opportunities to people. They were charging the tenants a dollar a month to occupy these buildings. A lot of these buildings are catching on fire. We need to find a way to put people in these buildings. If we have to charge lower rent, let's do it. Let's work with the county on that or something. I know it's county buildings, but let's work with that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
My name is Victor Beecham. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to come up and introduce some of the work that we're doing as a San Bernardino collaboration. And the fourth quarter report that we've put together, it shows that we've provided food services for over 1,000 people. And this is from October to December. We've housed 55 people over the last 90 days. 36 of them had zero income, which would equate to over 3,000 bed nights. We provided resources for over 200 people assisting them and connecting to resources for medical help, employment, and utilities and other services. We've had a dozen events. At eight of those alone, we provided meals and a positive environment for over 600 people. We've had medical connection resources. We've had educational resources. We've had employment resources, excuse me, initiatives. And we began to build back our city without any city funding. And we're here today with some of the agencies to try to strategize and see if what we're doing is what the city plan is. We've passed out hygienes. We've done workforce development. We've done so many things over the last 90 days. We'll be prepared in February to give a yearly update of the things that we've done. And today, one thing that we have in common with Unity in the Community, Rise of the Fallen Angels, and Sisters Making a Difference, is that we've all tried to follow the process and the protocols of getting permission to go to the parks to feed the people. We know the parks need to be for the children, but we need to do something with the people. We don't take the people out of the park for the kids to go to the park and the people to sleep in places that are not meant for habitation. With the greatest grace and gracious interpretation, we're going to say it was the end of the year and seats were being changed. But we would love to meet with you all, with the city manager, and begin to see how can we as a community come together? We're doing this with no funding. We've tried. And we're not being accepted and acknowledged. And we're successful. We, the people that are in the community, the natives, the ones that have hearts for this city, the ones that are coming up with our own funds to make this happen, we need an opportunity to see some of the services that are being given to others to provide. And if money is being taken and not spent, I don't understand it. But thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
How you doing tonight? My name is Thomas Burpee and I'm from Unity in the Community. I'm one of the founders. In our organization, what we're trying to do is build bridges. We're trying to build bridges between the Black and the Latino community. We're trying, we're bringing rival gangs together. And we're trying to squash that. We're trying to let our kids have a better place to live in San Bernardino. And we've been doing this since June. We've been having barbecues. We've been playing softball. We've been at Encanto Park over there off of 10th Street, on 10th Street in Mount Vernon. And when the time changed, we lost our light. So we didn't have any light. So we came, we rung our own lights. We paid for the food. We paid for the sodas. We paid for the waters. We paid for the lights. We paid for everything out of our own pockets because we really trying to give our kids something else to do other than be out there killing each other. We want our kids to live. We want them to thrive because it's our job to teach them better. And that's what Unity in the Community does. We hand out food for the homeless. We gave out over 200 turkeys out of our own pockets for Thanksgiving. We gave toys for the kids on Christmas out of our own pockets. We ain't asked for no handouts. Now, what we would like is when we're in the park, Encanto Park, to have the lights on when it gets dark so that the kids, it's getting dark at 5:00. And we usually do our community service on Sundays. It gets dark early. So we would like for the lights to stay on and the bathrooms to be open. There's the ba, there's a bathroom in that park and it's closed. So we have to either bring a porta potty that we pay for when there's a bathroom right there. And we're not begging for nothing, but we are asking for a little help. We trying to keep the community safe. And if you look at the numbers on Sundays, you look at the numbers on Sundays and see how many people, what the gang activity is like. I can show you a picture where I have 15 different gangs in one picture getting along, playing dominoes, playing spades, playing softball. And that's what we want to try to keep it going. We trying to build bridges and we seem like we're getting blocked. We, we can't get the doors open to the bathroom. We can't get the lights on. So while we're building bridges, somebody's building the wall and we don't want that. You know what I mean? We just asking not for a handout, just a little help to keep the community safe. My name is Thomas Burpee and I thank you for what you're doing and what y'all can do. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Well said, Thomas. I'm Brian Russell. And I'm only going to say one thing, just acknowledge the work that we're doing. I'm part of Unity in the Community and professional athlete, la di da da da. But I come back to give to my community, which is our community. And just acknowledge what we doing and understand that we really about San Bernardino. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, Mr. Russell, for those who don't know, I was referring to, he's a former Laker, former Utah Jazz, and what, what other teams did you play for, sir? Don't be modest. Come on.
And thank you for all that you do. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello. Okay, so, hi, everybody. Good evening, Mayor, all of the City Council members and staff. First off, I want to say, oh, I'm Ronnie Miller, Sisters Making a Difference CEO and founder. I want to say congratulations to Kim, Dr. Treasure Ortiz, and also Mario for your new seats up there. And I also want to give a special thank you to Mario Flores. The day after he got elected, he did come out to support. He was the only one that came out to support our initiative for our communities, SB Community Christmas. He came out and actually brought a truckload of toys to support us at our ugly sweater party that we held and which we got a lot of toys in the efforts of bridging the gaps between serving the underprivileged neighbors. This year, we did take a different approach instead of serving at Valley College like we normally do with our big Christmas, serving 3,000. We actually did unrecognizable and took initiative to do a three-day Christmas tour across San Bernardino, along with Unity in the Community and other great other organizations, which expanded and served over 3,000. And we did this without the city help. We did this without the county help. We actually did this with local businesses and those that came out to support those in the neighborhoods. Our initiatives actually was taken with a force to go ahead and go in those underserved apartment communities that really needed the actual help with the families that did not have Christmas and don't have organizations going in there, knocking on the doors and giving them a Christmas. So we did that. And we did that over span with our own volunteers. It would have been a bigger effort if we did have support from the city because we are helping you guys up there. We're local organizations grassroots, coming out of our own pockets, as they mentioned, and serving our community because we know what it feels like to not have. I don't know how many of you guys here doesn't know what is not to have, but it's a different approach that you do take as an organizer when you are serving. And that's our whole goal is to serve. So everybody on the councils, on the dais is actually responsible for the people of San Bernardino. And you are there because of the people of San Bernardino. So it's our, our initiatives. You guys help us, we help you. San Bernardino will be great. Like we all have to help the police, the fire, and everybody. This is one city. It is not going to take no efforts from just one organizations to uplift San Bernardino, support San Bernardino. We are a special community in San Bernardino, as we do know. But the people of San Bernardino, they don't really trust half of you guys up there. They trust the organizers who's on the front line, day in and day out throughout the year, that's serving the capacities that they are doing on their own time. So please, if you have it in your heart, this year, we could turn it around. Help those organizers that's actually doing the work as well. And thank you to the organizers that's been doing the work for San Bernardino. And we're not taking nothing from nobody. We just want to turn it around. Let's come up with solutions and not more problems. Let's all be for San Bernardino and nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Junior Correio. Mayor, Council, and staff. I come to you asking about commissions, the importance. I mean, Jeff, Jeff made a shout out to our community to get involved. And the reason I'm sharing that, August 28th, I had a six bypass and a valve. I've served on the Public Safety Committee. Next month will be two years. I've missed one meeting. And the reason I missed that one meeting, because I was on a gurney in a hospital. I am here today to tell you, I went to my cardiologist today. Prior to surgery, I, my heart rate was, my heart function was 35%. Today, I'm 60%. So I am 25% more invested in the city today than I was four months ago. And I am, I am ready to roll up my sleeves. I'm ready to work with, with my commission to do more for this city. I mean, I am, I am absolutely privileged to serve the community, to be the liaison between what the public wants and what we need to communicate to, to our council. Our council wants to help us, but if they don't know, I, I heard the gentleman talk on potholes and I saw Ernest Salinas chasing to the door before I could. Because that's the purpose of the commissions. The commissions can address these issues. There's not an issue we haven't brought to our commission that we didn't get handled. If it's PD, if it's Public Works, if it's Fire, these issues that are brought to the council, there is great. But the first step is let's utilize our, our commissions. I mean, if a commission is working right, it'll help eliminate some of these people coming here. Had Ernest not gone up and chased this guy, where that guy was, what would have happened? My key is, he beat me to him because I was going to go get him, come down to our commission. Let's get this ball rolling. The guy with the lights, the same way, he can come to our commission. We can get that ball rolling, you know? Because ultimately, once we get that commission running the way it should be, every commission should run that way. And then we're just an advisory, but we hear these complaints, then they bring them to the council. Instead of having 20 people beat up on our poor council people and our mayor and our staff, why not utilize the commissions and do the same thing I want to do? Like I said, today, I'm 25% more invested in this city because I, God has given me 25% more energy and I want to use it to better the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
That concludes public comment. You also should have received a written comment from Chris Lopez regarding sanctuary cities.
All right. Thank you. We will now move on to a public hearing. We have four public hearings. Madam City Manager, do you have a comment?
No, I was just going, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I would like to introduce Gabriel Elliott to provide the report on the first public hearing.
Okay. So the first public hearing is item number two. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution approving the issuance of revenue obligations by the California Enterprise Development Authority through Benevolence Industries Incorporated, a federally qualified health center agency within city San Bernardino city limits. I'm opening the public hearing at 6:49 PM. The city staff provide a presentation on this item.
Agreed, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. About six months ago, Benevolence Health approached the city. They were requesting some funding under the TEFFRA Act. And one of the facilities that they're requesting funding for happens to be in the city of San Bernardino. The total amount they are actually requesting is $37 million, but there's only one facility here in San Bernardino, which is at 505 through 515. I think it's Arrowhead, yeah, not, not Harrahhead Avenue. And that facility, the funding they're requesting for that is about $9.5 million. In order for them to qualify for this funding, the city of one of the, in which one of the properties that they're trying to renovate or improve or whatever, the, the city council has to pass a resolution. So what you have in front of you today is a request from them for the city council to pass a resolution. a resolution that they can, that would qualify them to be able to receive the funding under the TEFFRA Act. Now, the Benevolence has been represented by a group called the Kutekarak. And Mr. Cyrus Dobarie Atarabi is here this evening. Should you have any questions regarding all the educacies of how they do their filings and so on and so forth? But this is not a city staff initiated project. It's a third-party project, but we are included in this because one of the facilities that's been requested for funding happens to be in our city. And the request is for us to pass a resolution that will allow them to get the funding that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak? Does anyone wish to speak on this item?
We have four. The first speaker is Yolanda Macias, followed by Elba Cordova, Martha Calvillo and Jose Avalos.
Thank you. Please approach the podium and state your name for the record. Each speaker will have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, how are you? First of all, I want to say thank you, public, the people they going clean that street has been doing great, but I, hopefully you can continue doing that because you clean behind my building. I have pictures. They have a boxes, the middle boxes, people they don't need clothes or shoes. They drop it there, right there on Best Line and D Street. People get open that and they start fighting behind my building. So thank you for sending people to clean up, but I think you need to keep doing it. Don't forget about us. You doing great job. Keep doing, clean our street. This is one thing. The other, I hear people, they trying to help homeless and all that. That is, to me, what I see is ridiculous.
Ma'am, are you here to speak on this item?
Yes.
Okay. Can you make sure you focus to speak because this is public hearing for specifically this item?
Okay. Anyhow, is people deliver food to the homeless and they taking a pictures? And I asked the lady, are you here to drop it up food for them? And they say, yes. I say, why you taking a pictures? Oh, it's for my foundation. I say, I was thinking, are you doing for your heart or for your foundation to get, collect money later? Of course, it's for collect money later. The thing is, they go and deliver food to these people, but they never stay there. These people left trash and a lot of bad things over there. We have people masturbating, we have prostitution, we have so many bad things in our streets. And that is how need to stop. So don't tell me you bring food to the homeless from your good heart. You bring food to the homeless because somehow you get money back from government or for, I don't know from where. The thing is, keep doing what you doing, clean it up our streets and don't, and please listen to me. Whatever people they come and they say they donate 500 turkeys from their own pocket, I don't believe that. Go, don't give. Teach the kids to do something for that turkey. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you for listening to me. Hopefully you do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Elba Cordova.
Point of order. Shall we close the here, shall we finish up and then hear these unless these are specifically related to the public hearing? Otherwise it compromises the public hearing.
Can we confirm that the remainder of the speakers are regarding about the site?
I was wondering if they were commenting because of the Benevolence Industries? Because that is the tougher hearing on their item. That could be why, but you might want to ask them. So are these comments related to the Benevolent Industries?
Thank you.
Buena noche, mi nombre es Elba Cordova. Good evening. My name is Elba Cordova. Y si nosotros, yo ahorita esto los estoy oyendo que están haciendo la limpieza en San Bernardino y yo se los agradezco enormemente porque yo tengo 35 años aquí en el district de San Bernardino Best Line and D. Y ha sido para mí todos los días andar limpiando, todos los días.
Okay, they can meet there with that. So I've been listening to the efforts that you've been making as far as cleaning up. I've been in San Bernardino for 35 years. I'm on D Street in San Bernardino, D Street and Best Line. And I appreciate the efforts made because I've had to clean up every single day.
Y pues lamentablemente a veces sí nos afecta porque ahorita mi fence está quebrado. Se llevan las tablas para calentarse y el agua me la dejan tirar y no tiene, yo no puedo ir a abrir una llave porque pues se llevan y el agua y ellos traen pinzas y de todas maneras las abren y hay muchas cosas así.
And so unfortunately, it does affect us. Right now, I have a broken fence. There are water issues. I can't open the water faucet or leave it open because they come and take water. They have, if I shut it off, they have pliers and they use pliers.
Y lamentablemente pues son organizaciones que llegan y les suplen todo lo que necesitan ellos desde ropa, cobijas, alimentos y lo primero que les dicen firma aquí, firma. Y pues yo sabemos que todo eso nos afecta a todos. Muchísimas gracias.
And so I know that these are organizations that give them everything. They give them food, they give them clothing, they give them blankets and they provide and then they ask them to sign here and leave, but I appreciate it.
Thank you. Before we do that, I believe these comments are tied to item number three. So can we hold off and continuing and then just for the record, for the first two speakers, could they be reflected for item three so we could wrap up item two? And make sure that the comments that we've received, the first two speakers are reflected for item three. Sounds like that's the vacation street for the Base Line and D. So can she hold off on her comment until we go to item three?
I can wait.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk? Is there any other speakers for item two? Okay. I am now closing the public hearing for item number two at 6:58 PM for deliberation and action. Do we have any discussion or comments from the council?
Who to approve?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Ibarra?
I just want to clarify. We, the city, are giving them this money to acquire, construct and renovate?
No. To clarify, I know it is a misunderstanding typically because we have to approve this or the council, I'm sorry, has to approve this because they're residing, or I'm sorry, the business is located in this jurisdiction. So under this federal act, this federal regulation, it is required to issue these types of bonds. They are a medical facility, a health facility. So they do qualify to issue these bonds for financing of infrastructure, but they do need to get approval from the body, the jurisdiction legislative body. But we have no financial obligation now or at any time in the future.
Okay, thank you.
I second the motion. Thank you. So there's a motion and second. Any further comments? Seeing none, can we call for the votes?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharet? Councilmember Canos?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. Thank you, council. Moving on to public hearing, item number three, resolution approving a street vacation, 15.30-442 of a portion of Lola Place east of North D Street and north of West Base Line Street and the reservation of utilities therein. This is in Ward Two. I'm opening the public hearing at 6:59 PM. Could staff, city staff provide a presentation on this item, please?
I would like to introduce our Economic Development Director, Ken Chop, to provide this presentation.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. Ken Chop, Economic Development Director. I am joined by Josh Tramatinos, our Deputy Director, to present the item. And I believe the applicant is also present if you have any further questions.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Happy New Year to you all. So this evening, we're putting before you Resolution 2025-002, which is basically approving a portion of Iola Place to be vacated. Now, just as a general reminder, the vacation process is just the official term for the process. That describes the termination of the city's interest in a portion of street and easement or alley. So before you, we'll get into the presentation here in a moment. Before you is just a brief description from the applicant. We have this evening GGF3 LLC represented if there are any questions from the public or council. The stated reason for the petition to vacate this portion of the street is to allow for future commercial development and also to mitigate some of the homeless encampment issues that are relative to this site. You may see, I don't have the clicker. So you may, you may see from the aerial here that this area is adjacent to one of the more recent homeless encampment cleanups. So the, the reason behind the request from the applicant is twofold. It's to accommodate future development on the site as well as to mitigate some of the homeless activity. You'll see from the aerial image, this portion of, of street encroaches onto the commercial development there. In total, we're looking at about approximately 3,200 square feet of Iola Place that, that would be vacated and thus giving the, the applicant ownership interest in, in the former street. The process by which we conduct these street vacations, we take them to the planning commission to find conformity with the city's general plan. We have done that. The planning commission unanimously voted that it is, it conforms to the city's general plan. We also have their indication that it is exempt from CEQA as there is no significant impact on the environment. The utility companies that have any interest or easements in the area are traditionally notified in these, in these processes. There were no requests to reserve any of the easements. And the notice of hearing was sufficiently posted in the circular as well as at the, the project site. So, so with that, I will, I will answer any questions that the mayor and council have and also the applicant is present as well.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any requests to speak? And just to reflect the record, we had two speakers who spoke earlier and that will be for the record for this item.
Yes. The additional speakers are Martha Calvillo and Jose Avalos.
Thank you. If you hear your name, please approach the podium.
My name is Martha Calvillo. Y estoy aquí porque yo tengo un nieto especial y yo estoy en la calle donde está la Smart and Final, donde quitaron los 19 tents. Okay, so I'm here because I have a special needs grandchild. And I'm at the corner of the old Smart and Final where they removed the 19 tents. And they destroyed all my fence. Todo mi cerca está quebrada. And my entire fence was destroyed. Y la cosa es que ellos avientan agujas y mi nieto cuando es el verano los saco a la, a la yarda atrás. So ese es el peligro que tengo. Él tiene problemas porque tiene problemas de caminar porque tiene parálisis cerebral. Okay. So the thing is, when they are out there, they throw needles and I take my grandson out in the summer, he has issues with walking. He has paralysis. And so that, that poses a danger for him. Yes. Y también tengo el reporte de tres casos de mi propiedad que entró un intruso a mi propiedad adentro de mi casa y mi nieta lo tuvo que atacar porque era la vida de nosotros y él estaba allá dentro. Okay. And so there are, there are also three reports that someone came into the home. My granddaughter had to attack the person that came in, inside the home because it was either our life or that person. Y también de vandalismo, son tres casos. And there's also a vandalism case. There are three cases. Y también tengo dos años reportando las luces de las calles porque está muy oscuro. And I, it's been two years that I've been reporting the street lights because it's very dark. Y yo agradecería que siguieran chequeando esa calle porque yo ya no tengo la cerca y va a costar para arreglarla. Tengo fotos. Okay. And I would appreciate if you continue to check on that street. I don't have a fence. It's going to cost money and I have photos. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker? Madam City Clerk, is, what's the name of the speaker?
Jose Avalos. Yeah, Jose Avalos.
Okay, it looks like he's not here. That concludes the speakers. Oh, there's.
She, they're indicating that he had to leave to work, but somebody could speak on his behalf.
He would have to be here to speak. Thank you. All right, that concludes the speakers. I am now closing the public hearing at 7:06 PM for deliberation and action. Do we have any comments? I know Councilmember Ortiz have a comment?
Who to approve?
Okay, there's a motion. There's a second. Councilmember Ortiz?
So I just had a couple questions. For the reason for the request is to allow for future commercial development. Have they brought anything forward for future development to us?
No, ma'am. At this time, there's no application pending.
Okay. The other question I had is that this proposed street vacation is consistent with the general plan. What year is the general plan? Is it consistent with what we've been doing up until this point or, because I know a general plan is not even here?
Yes, ma'am. It's consistent with the general plan currently in place.
And, and what, what year is that? Do you know?
I, I don't want to misspeak. I know it's been some time since the general plan's been revised or amended.
So like 2015, 2012 general plan?
Yeah.
Okay. So this isn't anything current within a decade?
Correct.
Okay, awesome. The other question that I have is just to make sure, so everybody was properly noticed within a thousand feet? And nobody had any objections or anything to that?
No. And beyond noticing in a thousand feet, we post notices on the site. We did that for a few consecutive weeks just on the site. And we had, we, we know that the notices were affected because we had police calling and asking us when they were attempting to, to vacate that adjoining alley. They noticed the signs and they wanted to make sure that there was no other efforts underway. So.
Wonderful. And last question. So with the vacation, and I see that they're doing this in conjunction of keeping the homeless out, do they have plans, maybe applicant can answer it, but do they have plans to then secure the area or is this going to be an ongoing where they're reporting trespassing to PD? How is that going to work?
I'll defer that question to the applicant. And, and I can speak to the active 602 form. There is an active 602 form or trespassing form on file for that specific person.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, city staff. Appreciate the opportunity to answer the question. So we have onsite security. It's an open air center. So we won't be able to gate off the area due to ingress and egress and access purposes, but it will allow us to have more control, especially our security, to be able to approach people who are not supposed to be onsite, on premises. And as the economic development indicated, we do have the notice on file for, for trespass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, seeing none, there was a motion and second.
It's been a long time coming. I know that area very well. And, and if anybody knows that area, there's a lot of encroaching onto private property happening currently. And I'm very thankful for the staff, for the cleanup they did. And unfortunately, a lot of the unhoused in that area don't want to get services, but I'm glad to hear there was 25 individuals that did get services. So it's a move forward. We just got to get them into housing now and find out where, who can serve them better. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion and second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharet?
Yes.
Councilmember Canos?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Moving on to item number four, public hearing on annexation number 47 is a drive-through restaurant located south of Hospitality Lane and west of Tippecanoe Avenue to Community Facilities District 2019-1 Maintenance Services. This is in the third ward. The public hearing to consider annexation 47 is now open at 7:10 PM. Do you have any council members who wish to see, hear the staff reports? Nope? Okay. We now, will now receive comments, protests and questions from any persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the city council for a maximum of three minutes. Please submit your speaker slips to the city clerk.
We do not have any public speakers.
Okay. Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Are there any persons registered to vote within annexation number 47 of Community Facilities District number 2019-1? If so, how many registered voters are there?
Just for the record, Mayor, I have not received any written protest. Just for the record, Mayor, I have not received any written protest and the County of San Bernardino Register of Voters has certified that there are no registered voters within annexation number forty-seven of Community Facilities District number 2019-1.
Thank you. I now declare the public hearing closed at 7:11 PM.
Who'd approve?
I'll second.
Thank you so much, council. Madam City Clerk, please call for the votes.
And this is to approve resolution 2025-003. Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council. May I have a motion to adopt resolution?
Mayor, I'm sorry, there's a line I need to read. The official ballot has been opened and all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot and the election is now closed.
Thank you. Now may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2025-004, annexation number forty-seven?
Who'd approve?
Thank you. There's a second? There's a motion and second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I would now ask for a motion to waive further reading and introduce by title only ordinance number MC 1646. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second.
I need to read the title and to the record of the ordinance. Ordinance number MC 1646 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, amending ordinance number MC 1522 and levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2425 to pay the annual cost of the maintenance and servicing of landscaping, lighting, streets, a reserve fund for capital replacement and administrative expenses with respect to the City of San Bernardino, Community Facilities District number 2019-1 Maintenance Services. Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you council. Moving on to the last public hearing, item number five, public hearing on annexation number forty-eight, Piedmont Mobile Home Estates located north of Highland Avenue and east of North Piedmont Avenue to Community Facilities District 2019-1 Maintenance Services in the fourth ward. The public hearing to consider annexation forty-eight is now open at 7:13 PM. Any councilmembers wish to hear the staff report? Seeing none. Do any councilmembers have any questions or staff, for staff wish to make any comments? Seeing none. We will now receive comments, protests and questions from any persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the city council for a maximum of three minutes. Please submit your speaker to slip to city clerk.
We do not have any requests to speak.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any written protests?
I have received zero written protests.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, are there any persons registered to vote within annexation number forty-eight of Community Facilities District number 2019-1? If so, how many registered voters are there?
The County of San Bernardino Register of Voters has certified that there are no registered voters within annexation number forty-eight of Community Facilities District number 2019-1.
Thank you. I now declare the public hearing closed at 7:14 PM. May I have a motion to adopt resolution 2025-005 for annexation number forty-eight?
Who'd approve?
Thank you for the motion. There's a second. Madam City Clerk?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second.
The second? Who dashed for it?
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Flores?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The official ballot has been opened and all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot and the election is now closed.
Thank you. Now may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2025-006, annexation number forty-eight?
Who'd approve?
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a sec, oh, let's not fight. There's a second. Madam City Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I would now ask for a motion to waive further reading and introduce by title only ordinance number MC 1647. Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll second with a comment. One day before I leave here, Spicy, I'm, I'm going to vote against waiving, reading the ordinance. I'm going to have you read it. They're only, they're only two or three pages long. All right? Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and second.
Okay, ordinance number MC 1647 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, amending ordinance number MC 1522 and levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2425 to pay the annual cost of the maintenance and servicing of lighting, streets, parks, graffiti abatement, a reserve fund for capital replacement and administrative expenses with respect to the City of San Bernardino, Community Facilities District number 2019-1 Maintenance Services. Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council. Moving on to the consent calendar, items six to twenty-eight. City manager, please announce any items that needs to be pulled at this time.
We do, thank you, mayor, members of the council. Staff will need to pull item twenty-six on the Ruben Campos Community Center. We have one more task that needs to be completed and we'll be bringing it back likely at the next meeting. We also have two correction memos that have been issued to you, items nine and sixteen. Item nine is annexation number forty-nine, resolution of intention for an annexation. This was continued, it was scheduled for the December eighteenth meeting, we continued to update certain today. It is required that we have an updated petition. The petition has to be within ninety days of the resolution of intention forward to this, this point. So they have received an updated petition to fall within that, that ninety day requirement. Item sixteen, we have one item, that is for updating classifications. The veterinarian position is correct in the resolution of the dollar amount of $187.50 for the, the hourly wage. The staff report was incorrect and stated $128, so that's another technical correction. That's all that I have for the consent calendar.
Thank you. Councilmember Ibarra, do you have any polls?
I just had a question and something maybe staff can just answer quick, yes.
Oh, no, we, we need to pull it if you just have a question.
I'm going to prove it, I just want to make sure something.
Correct, but I think we've decided to just pull it for questions and then we can. So which item is that? Councilmember Ibarra?
That was item, item number six.
Six, thank you. Any other items? No? Councilmember Canas? No? Okay, Councilmember Sanchez?
Nope.
Thank you. Councilmember Ortiz?
Seven.
Seven.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Real quick comment on sixteen.
Sixteen.
And then I, I approve all of the other ones, but I just want to give one quick comment on twenty-three and twenty-two, but I do approve them.
Twenty-two and twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem? None, thank you. Councilmember Flores?
Twenty-three, business for a comment.
Twenty-three, thank you. Councilmember Charette?
Move the balance.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion, second to move the balance?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you council. We start with item number six. Councilmember Ibarra, you have a question?
Yes, just for our staff, I'm not sure how often the Animal Control Commission is meeting right now, but if possible, is this something, I know you have, they're, they have the contract with us till October. If they can give a breakdown on a monthly basis to the commissioners of how that money's being used, whether it's microchips or the leashes or anything else that they have on the current contract, that would be nice, just as a form of transparency to the public of how the funds are being utilized. That'd be just a simple request that I like to make from our staff.
I'd like to invite Chris up to respond to that, thank you.
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity to respond, Madam Mayor and City Council. So our Animal Control Commission is currently meeting quarterly and we do report out all of the actions. This is something that we can do on our, our grant funding, we can share it on a quarterly basis and we actually have a meeting next Wednesday here at four o'clock.
If it can be done maybe monthly, that'd be even better for them. I, I want to say monthly instead of quarterly because that's a long way, people tend to forget sometimes of how, how the progress is going.
So I want to get clarification, you're requesting for the commission to meet monthly or are you asking?
No, to give a report.
Requesting to report?
Give a report to the commissioners.
A report to the commission, okay. We can do that via email, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
With that all approved.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. Please call for the votes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council. Councilmember Ortiz, item number seven.
So I know that the requirement is for us to come back and, and support the state's movement on the ADUs, but I think Councilmember Charette and my constituent Mike Hartley really speak to some important points as the state directs us to have to accommodate these buildings and, and we maneuver, is it possible for us to look at parking permits? Because what's happening is now, you know, as people are building legally or illegally, the parking situation is unreal and if people are then required to stay within how many cars fit in their driveway versus right in front of their house, that may be something that, that we need to look for, for our residents and if that's something possible, we can look into.
So to get clarification, are you asking for looking into parking permits as a city for that area?
On street, yes.
On the street, on those streets, applicable streets?
Yes.
We can absolutely look into that and bring an item back in the future.
Thank you.
Who'd approve?
Thank you, there's a motion. There's a second. Please call for the votes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
I will remain consistent voting no, albeit it's, I know it's going to have to go through.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes six to one with Councilmember Charette voting opposition.
Thank you, council. Item number thirteen, Councilmember Ortiz.
Yes, so just real quick, city manager or assistant city manager, I just wanted to, for you to update the, the public really quickly on, on this technicality and this fix and how you found it and just what the adjustment means, if there's any fiscal impact.
Thank you. I would like to invite our finance director up to provide any additional information as to how it was discovered. I, my understanding is that our auditors discovered the technical correction that went back three years. It is an item that is required based on the state population. There is a, an act, the GAN Proposition Four Act was adopted in 1979 and would you like to provide more information on this, Jeanne? Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and city council. As stated by the mayor, this was an act when Prop 13 was approved and it was for the voters, it's for the benefit of the voters. This way that all revenue received by each city, they just don't spend all at once. So what they did for every government agency is put a cap on that spending and they based it on population factors and CPI or increase in economy. So when they came up with a calculation in seventy-nine, they said, okay, this is your base. If you generate revenue, let's say for us, our base was 200 million, if you exceeded that 200 million, you are required to return it back. You cannot spend it on city services, that goes back to the city. Every year that would raise that by a certain factor. The City of San Bernardino has never been close to that, to that cap. Our cap currently is 400, 480 million. If we exceed that, receiving that much revenue, general fund revenue, we'd have to return it. We are currently at 196, so we're actually less than half of that cap. So we have a long way to go before we would have to return any, any general fund revenue. What happened was when our auditors audited our current year that we're going to be reporting in, in the next couple of reports, they noticed an error again in the percentage that was used and the incorrect population factor. And this was an error in our finance department. So what we did, when we looked at it to be on the safe side, we went back three years. That's when we found it was. We informed the auditors, we are going back to our city council, we're going to request corrected resolutions of all our GAN limit. Yeah, it was the cap that was an error, not our revenue subject to the limit. And, and like I said, our revenues are roughly around 200 million, but our cap now is 480 million. So we are well below that cap.
Wonderful, thank you so much for that explanation. And then don't move. Moved to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council. Moving to item number fifteen, Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes, thank you so much. I know that our constituent from the fifth ward, Ms. Victoria, brought up the ARPA funds and how important that was and so I just, Madam City Manager or, or Finance, Ms. Jeanne, if you would just, did we meet our requirements? Have we expended all of our funds? Where are we, real quick?
So, Councilmember Ortiz, we actually prepared a little PowerPoint presentation. I.[1598.97]
Where are we, real quick?
So, Councilmember Ortiz, we actually prepared a little PowerPoint presentation. I. So, just a little quick history. The American Rescue Plan Act provided funds as a result of COVID-19 to corresponding cities. It was based on population. So, as a city in, we received, in '21, in May of 2021, actually received a total of 77.6 million. And the requirements were that we obligate all 77.6 by December 31st of last calendar year. So, here we are to report that, okay. I'm sorry, but our graph didn't come out. But we have allocated all 77 million and we've reported that to the U.S. Treasury. And so, in our breakdown, you can see of that 77 million that we've allocated, 34 have been awarded directly to contractors and sub recipients. We have done inter-agency agreements for 17 million. And we've actually spent 25 million of that 77 million. So, this just gives us a breakdown of all the projects. And in October of that 77, we had only obligated 25 and only spent 12. So, we had three months and I'm sure the city council was aware, we've been awarding a lot of contracts in the last three months. So, we were actually able to obligate 100% of our ARPA funding. We did meet that deadline. So, we completed all the requirements. And they had provided us guidance how to make that requirement. There is no general fund impact associated with this obligation. All projects are in various stages of the completion. And what we're going to do is provide routine updates. If we are able to do it quarterly, since we report quarterly to the U.S. Treasury, we will do the same to city council. So, you get a regular update. And so, we recommend that city council receive and file this report.
So, I, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay, I want to thank you. And I told you guys that I was going to pull this because I think, you know, one to my colleagues that I wasn't up here with. I really do appreciate you guys doing this, even if it isn't last minute. And to staff, the amount of time it took to put $50 million together. And coming out of COVID, it was an awful time, but it gave us an economic momentum to, to help address some of the biggest concerns. And I don't, you know, this is how, if you've ever watched my gender reviews, how I feel about some things being on consent. Sometimes we just stamp away the, the true hard work, the sweat equity that goes into, you know, future developments, future investments. And so, just from me, and thank you, thank you so much for just hitting 100% because that, that's some solid stuff right there. So, thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Ortiz, I would like to thank actually our Public Works, our parks, our community development and economic development directors because they're the ones that had to get all the contracts, get all the plans submitted, get it completed.
And our grants team who put a lot of time into every single one of those projects.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Can we go back real quickly to the charts? Just want to know what right now, what's been, what's been spent? 12, 12, one, right? Okay.
25.
Oh, 25, okay.
When we reported in October, it was 12.
Wonderful, wonderful. So, just for the viewing audience at home, what is the deadline for the 77.6 to get spent?
Oh, the balance, December 31st, 2026.
2026. So, this first step is really, really good. The really hard work begins now because we got to make sure that money gets expended. I know a lot of these are going to require a lot of, a lot of construction to go on around the city before, before the money's spent. So, you guys have a little bit of time getting done. Thanks. Has there been a motion to approve? Oh, okay. Move to approve.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Any other comments by council? None?
Again, staff, thank you so much because in that regular update, it's going to be very, very important. So, thank you so much. All right, please cover the votes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Moving on to item number 16, Councilmember Ortiz.
So, real quick, first I want to, Ms. Watson, Director Watson and staff, I really appreciate you bringing this back. I know Community had spoken on this many a times, for this to be a per diem role because of the national, I know HR had expressed and you had expressed the national crisis for veterinarians. So, thank you for listening to Community. I know it doesn't always feel like we're being heard, but when you do stuff like this, I want to recognize it. And then, as far as this amendment, are we no longer doing the range from 105.75 and then the top steps 187 or?
That's correct. It's a set salary.
Okay, thank you. Move to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion?
Second.
There's a second?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council. Moving on to item 22, Councilmember Ortiz.
Just wanted to say thank you to staff for continuing this work. I know Encanto's big and I wanted to, what I say to you guys behind closed doors, I want to say to you publicly, so thank you. And I move to approve.
Thank you, council member. Is there a second?
Second.
Please call for the votes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Sorry, what was the item? Oh, 16?
22, Board of Construction Agreement for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Grant Voucher Program, Solar Retrofit in the Amount of 249. Okay.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you, council. And the last item, item 23, Councilmember Ortiz followed by Councilmember Flores.
Actually, I did the wrong, it was supposed to be 24, not 22.
Oh, 24?
Yeah, I messed up.
Okay, so it's actually for Councilmember Flores for 23 and then?
I said a question, just wanted to say something.
Okay.
Thank you, mayor. No, I just wanted to take a moment and thank staff for your hard work. And I genuinely look forward to the pace and progress on not only this item but our other park item. I want to thank my colleagues for their continued support for this item and keeping it moving forward. And also, big thank you to the county supervisor, Baca, for the, for him always thinking about the city of San Bernardino, our communities, our families, our parks and supporting us. And lastly, in the spirit of just being transparent and giving credit where credit is due, this item wouldn't be at the forefront if it wasn't for the leadership of council, former councilwoman Calvin. No, thank you for, for thinking, for your advocacy for our parks, our community and our families and the sixth ward. And with that, I move to approve. Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and second?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And Councilmember Ortiz has a comment for 24.
Yeah, my apologies, I said the wrong name. I just wanted the community to know in, if you didn't read the staff. So, this is going to be reevaluated for the price, that these projects are not being taken off the books. We're just making sure that it's, it's meeting the cost effectiveness of which Public Works had previously, like, bargained for, right?
Yeah. Good evening, mayor and city council. Yes, this is, was not going to be taken off the books, that's for sure. What I'll do is I'm going to re-scope it and we're going to tackle the high flooding area in the city first and then evaluate the ones that remains on the list. And we'll come, we'll have to advertise again on Planet Bid for a new bid. This is, again, an opportunistic bid. It's double the engineer estimate. And I'm not going to award the contract, which is double the engineer estimate in this city. So, I just want to make sure that when we advertise next time for bids, it comes back within the engineer estimate, just like we did with the 4th Street Alley. So.
Thank you so much. And I appreciate the, the good investments and the fiscal, you know, smart ship right there.
Okay, my pleasure.
Thank you, councilwoman. All right, we will now move on to discussion items. We have three. Item 29, Vanner Building Lease Options for Permit and Plan Check Counter Location and Office-Based Needs. Could we begin with staff's presentation?
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. I would like to invite management analyst, senior, senior management analyst, William Lampy up to provide a presentation. He did provide an update to council and a presentation in June of 2023. So, he is going to cover some of the historical information that was provided in that previous information, presentation, the direction that was given. And additionally, it was in the staff report updated that we have a budget of 400,000, 440,000 as it, as William traced back where the money was budgeted, where the actual allocation, I should say, was budgeted previously. It was budgeted in two different areas, 400,000 in each area for a total of 800,000 that is truly budgeted for the one-stop shop that was previously directed by council. So, with that, I'll introduce William to provide the presentation.
All right. So, good evening, mayor and honorable council members. So, the item before you today is essentially just asking for some staff direction and to provide a council update regarding the one-stop shop and some leasing options that are now available to us at the Vanner Building. For the benefit of the new council members and for the public, I'll do a quick recap on the history of the current situation and what the one-stop project actually is. And then, I'll dive more deeply into what our new current options are and the cost estimates associated with them. So, in a nutshell, the city's permitting counters are not effectively set up to be very conducive for taking out permits and doing business. All of our permit counters at the city are currently decentralized. And so, what that means is that they're not all in one nice, convenient location. So, if you want to get a permit that requires building and safety and planning, public works, and also a business license, because you need to have a business license to do work in the city, you have to go to three different locations in two different buildings on three different floors. And that is not very convenient to our business community or our residents who might be trying to pull a permit themselves for the first time. In addition to that, our permit counters are significantly, significantly undersized. If you ever tried to go to the Building and Safety and Planning Division Permit Counter, that counter cannot fit a full set of plans. Additionally, that permit window can only fit two people at one time. And yet, you have four to five permit techs, you have a couple of different planners and planning aides. And so, you can't effectively handle the customer load because you could have like 15 people in that lobby and you have staff to handle maybe five to six at a time, depending on who they're, they're to see. But that permit window itself can only handle two staff members at a time. And so, again, you have these inefficiencies just built in the space design as it's currently set up. And then, in addition to that, just the city overall has some tight squeezes with staff overcapacity in our existing office spaces. And so, we will be also evaluating potentially other leasing options for other staff members to move to other floors outside of just a one-stop shop. Now, the one-stop shop is essentially a fixed to the permit counter problem. That's where you centralize all those different areas into one single location. And what that does is obviously it makes it more convenient to the customer. Rather than going from the third floor in the 201 building to the maze of a second floor to find the Public Works counter and then down the elevator outside and around the corner to the 201A building for business license and business registration, you can have it all in one place in one continuous counter or a U-shaped counter where you can actually just go in one stop to all the other city permit counters. In addition to that, when you have a more expansive and open space, you can actually accommodate larger counters to actually roll out plans and do plan checks right there on the spot at that counter for those easy plan checks that you can just do right there that day rather than submitting them to a consultant to do. And this would all kind of go hand in hand with that new permit software that the council approved on November 20th. So, not only would you have a one-stop shop that makes the in-person experience more convenient and effective, you'd also have a virtual experience where you can now finally submit plans online, rather than taking a picture or an application and submitting it, but still having to come in person in a very cramped corridor area. Some examples of one-stop shop, you can see the city of Riverside there on the left. And then, you also have the city of Yucaipa, which only has 55,000 people. And they have a much more expansive permit counter than the city of San Bernardino. Now, with regards to the history, because this project has been a long time coming and we have some updates on where we are currently. So, back in 2021, June of 2021, is when council first conceptually approved the project, but there was no funding behind it. Then, essentially one year later, with the adoption of the budget, $400,000 was approved in the capital improvement program budget during the fiscal year 2227 capital improvement program. Then, in June 30th of 2023, under interim city manager Charles McNeely, he wanted to get the ball rolling, so he moved forwards with the one-stop shop and he was targeting the 201 building where the current permit counter is and then expanding it into where the planning commission is. And those were the option, that was pretty much the only option that was available to the city at the time. That was the only space that was located with enough room and expansion possibility to handle a one-stop shop. Following that strategic initiatives, council approved and then later adopted a budget amendment for another $400,000. So, you have $400,000 that was adopted back in 2022 under one funding source and then another $400,000 that was adopted in 2023 under a different funding source. And if you want to know, the first funding source was the Public Use Facility Fund and the other one was Measure S. So, you have a total of $800,000. Council also approved in September of 2023, a design services agreement with Miller Architectural that would essentially allow the city to get some architectural plans to actually complete the project. That agreement was about $71,500 and only $1,969 was actually spent. And the reason for that was because we then had a new administration come in, Charles Montoya, and he stopped the project because his focus was on city hall. So, of the $800,000 that the council has budgeted historically for this project, only $1,969 has been spent because it was on pause under the then-new, now-former administration. So, now that we're now here today, we have some more possible leasing options that were not available to us back then. And one of them would be the 101A suite over at the Vanner Building. This is right across from the call center. So, if you go to the first floor, the green is the call center and the blue would be the potential site location for a one-stop shop. This means you don't have to navigate the parking structure trying to go to the top level of the parking structure, which is already a nightmare for anyone entering the parking structure for the very first time and then trying to find a way out of it. Here, you would have it right across from the call center. And the call center is the location where most people go when they're trying to navigate their way in the city. You also have city space that's currently being leased right behind that location. And that's currently where the grants, payroll, purchasing and recruitment divisions are for various other city departments. So, the proposed location and one of the proposals, if council is amendable to it, would be to lease Suite 101A at the Vanner Tower. And then, you could reshuffle some of the existing staff where the orange location is. You can potentially remove a barrier in the wall and kind of expand offices. So, you can have the one-stop shop kind of out in the front where you have more outside entry. And then, you can have staff offices in the back as a potential option. In terms of the costs associated with doing so, if you're going to lease 101A, that's about 3,600 square feet and the rate of $2.10 per square foot, you're getting around $7,600 a month. Now, in order to help facilitate other staff issues with overcapacity in existing offices, we also have available to us Suite 900 on the ninth floor at the near for the same square foot rate. So, doesn't matter if you're on the first floor or the ninth floor in the Vanner Building, it's $2.10 per square foot. That Suite 900 is a more expansive office space. It's about 7,100 square feet. And so, if council's amendable to that, that would be about $14,000 to $15,000 a month. So, in total, between those two spaces, you're looking at adding to the city's current lease with Vanner about $22,600 a month. Our current existing lease with Vanner is $56,000 per month. So, we would increase our lease obligation, our monthly lease obligation, going from $56,800 to about $79,400. Now, in discussions with Vanner, they did provide a couple of different lease options. You could do a simple lease amendment where you're not locking yourself into a seven-year lease, but we take those office spaces as is. Or if you want to lock yourself into a seven-year lease, they will provide new carpets and paint for those new spaces and the city would do some renovations on its existing spaces with its own funds. And then, I'll hand it back over to Rochelle.
And so, with that, staff would not be recommending the seven-year lease option because we do want to bring back an item in the coming months to discuss the reevaluation of, or evaluation of our former city hall. We did conduct an RFP, our request for proposals for a contract to perform that evaluation process. We want to bring that back with multiple options of going forward. Public Works Director Lynn Merrill has spent a lot of time working with the consultant that was previously introduced to council. We would like to restart that conversation in a workshop setting. We're targeting March, April at the latest, but we would really like to have that workshop scheduled in March so that we can move forward recommending that contract. So, for, for this purpose, we would not recommend the seven-month, I'm sorry, the seven-year lease option. The spaces are nearly move-in ready. The first floor is bare floors. It does need the flooring and it needs paint on the walls. So, what we propose is using that $800,000 budget that was already established for the, and it was really knocking down walls and completely reconfiguring the 201 building, rather than moving forward with that, instead finishing the flooring and the wall space and adding furniture and the connectivity for the 101A space. And it is a wide-open space. I can invite staff up to provide any other input, but myself, Fred, Cory, Gabriel, Ken and Lynn all walked the space together with the building manager, Joe Fuentes, to go over the existing conditions. It is a perfect wide-open space with already a big, one, one area is a big countertop for a plans location. It would be ideal to really just finishing the flooring and adding the furniture configuration. It would take some design work to make sure that we're using the best use of space. And we do already have that contract in place, so we can go forward quickly with that process. Now, the additional space needs. We did move, as William indicated, several different departments in the 101B area. They are using, in some instances, two to three cubicle spaces in one office that's meant for one person. Additionally, we have fragmented departments. We have some of our finance team, our director and our, our budget manager on the third floor. Yet, we have some of our, you know, you saw the payroll and the grants team on the first floor. Also, same scenario with our HR team.[1787.81] Also, same scenario with our HR team. If we were to occupy the ninth floor, we could move some city offices upstairs that are currently occupied by the city manager's office and the city council offices. That would thereby free up an entire space where city council is located close to the finance, where we have the finance director on one side of the city council offices, manager on the other side, and again, rest of the team downstairs. Very difficult to quickly, you know, work closely with your departments. That would open up additional space there as well as looking at the grants team bringing up really a lot of space on the third floor. The ninth floor is move-in ready. It is fully flooring, carpet. They've been occupying the office, but there is not a need for them to occupy the office, the owner of the building. So there's one minor adjustment that we would need to make for one office and then furniture and connectivity. So we do anticipate staying within that approximate budget. We actually, I will look to Lynn for more guidance on how much she thinks the architectural work would cost, but we believe that it would come close to what we already have budgeted. And it would be a much more efficient and effective use of our community public counter space in being more accessible on the first floor, as William mentioned, you know, going up on the parking structure with the ADA accommodations that, you know, we would need to consider in every aspect. Walking, we have staff coming down, I'm sorry, the community coming in all the time to the community, the information center. It would literally be just across, as he indicated on the diagram earlier, to start in one location and go to the other side for the rest of the services. And I'll let Lynn add to the architecture.
So the existing contract with Miller Architects is $71,000. We would anticipate a slight increase in that simply because you're changing the scope of the work from design work and construction documents to space utilization in the building. So you're looking at figuring out what people will be in the building or in the space and how to allocate that space adequately so you get the maximum opportunity. So I would anticipate that we would probably look at increasing that possibly up to $150,000 to be able to take care of any of these space issues. In addition, as the city manager mentioned, there is the challenge of the finishing of the room. It's very minimal because you would use, you would just have to do the carpeting and the painting. That's not a lot of expense in terms of trying to get it, it's just simple flooring. And then acquisition of the room dividers, and I would anticipate that that would not be permanent walls being constructed because it would be better in a one-stop center to have kind of the open framework as was shown in the two slides there. It's conducive, it generates that interaction between the different parties in the city staff as well as the ability of the development community and the residents to interact there.
Thank you. Is that all from the staff?
Yes, I was gonna say, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, I just want to go through the, just the fiscal impact, just so we know that what we're getting ourselves into. So what we've allocated for the one-stop shop at the 201 building essentially is about $800,000. Your estimates from staff are that we would expend that amount for design and implementation of the one-stop shop on the first floor as well as all the tenant improvements and the moving costs for the ninth floor? Is that for both or is that just for the one-stop shop?
At this time, we believe it would cover both. We would have to get more information and more quotes to bring that back, but at this time, we believe it would be for both, the ninth and first floors.
Okay, because I've had the opportunity to go to the first floor, and I think it's gonna need more than just flooring. There is water damage, there is mold, I'm not sure our city employee should be there, but...
I think you're speaking to the 101B building, or 101B suite? The 101A?
The 101, so if you can go back to this slide.
I will say the 101B area has been worked on by the, the building owner has recognized some issues.
Yeah, I've gone in there since then, and it's gonna need a little more. So grants, payroll, purchasing, and recruitment. There is water damage, there is some health concerns there, I think, that need to be addressed. They're gonna come at an extensive cost to the city. So we're looking at, let's just go ahead and say this is kind of the conservative estimate for design and implementation of the first, or the one-stop shop on the first floor. And we have the moving costs and the tenant improvements for the ninth floor, $800,000. If we were to exercise the option of amending the lease agreement, so there won't be any help from Vanner, or the owners of the building, we're looking at an annual cost exceeding a quarter of a million dollars every year to rent the space at Vanner Tower right now. Can you give me the dollar amount, what that is exactly?
I believe William has that dollar amount, but I just wanted to clarify very quickly. On the 101B suite, Vanner has already recognized that there are some issues. They already, they are responsible for repairing those issues, the water damage. They are providing some updates to the plumbing at the restroom area. So those are not covered by the city, those are covered by the owner of the building.
Okay. As long as that's on record. And do we have the dollar amount for what we would be paying total?
So the total lease cost for all city offices?
If we were to, yeah, if we were to include, we include 101A as well as the ninth floor and the existing lease for the third floor, if my math is correct, it's a little over a quarter of a million dollars a year.
$271,000 and...
$271,000 a year.
$296 a year, that would be additional to our...
The $800,000 for the tenant improvements. I know it's a tremendous cost and it's, it is an attractive idea to finally take the first step in this one-stop shop. That is a lot of money. I think before we do a final commitment to this approach, is there, through maybe the architects or the design firm we hired, can they take a look and tell us before? I mean, it wouldn't, for them to do an assessment wouldn't require them to expend a tremendous amount of money. They can do an assessment of what the tenant improvements would look like, how much they would cost, timing, so that we have a full understanding. Because right now, we're saying $800,000. It's just convenient that we already set $800,000 aside for the tenant improvements, sorry, for the one-stop shop. I mean, these costs could easily balloon significantly more. And then, I mean, we're also, this is, I'm hearing this for the first time, but I guess we're re-initiating the talk or reigniting the conversations about potentially options for the City Hall building. I don't want to commit $2, $3 million in tenant improvements if we're only gonna be in this building for the next three to six years. So maybe if the engineers, these engineers do this sort of work, right? The engineers we have on contract already? What are they called?
That's actually Miller Architects.
Miller Architects. Can we, I mean, it's within the purview of the contract, can we direct staff to get them to come back to us with what it would cost to implement that one-stop shop on the first floor?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to do that before we rush into this, just because it is, it's a lot of money. So I would make a motion to that effect. And then, I don't know, that shouldn't take too long. And then they can come back and then we can say, hey, look, tenant improvements are gonna be within that $800,000, maybe it's something we're ready to do, and then we can move forward.
What we can do is we can invite Miller Architects to tour the building and discuss some of the desires and the concepts that we're now talking about. I think the, I think the presentation tonight is just to seek direction as to whether or not this is a concept that the city and the council wants to pursue, and if that's the case, then we would then go and contact Miller Architects. We'd ask them to, we'd ask them to re-scope what they're doing, to look at the utilization and any of the modifications that would be necessary in the first floor, the 101B suite. And then we can bring that back to the council as part of the next steps.
Because this is a really good idea, but we have to, we have to balance that with fiscal responsibility. So I want to make sure that we're, that we're not gonna, we're gonna commit to something, we should have a good idea of what it's gonna cost us.
I can, I can pitch a little bit here for Miller Architects. They have been extremely responsive to us, and they understand, you know, the needs of the city, and that's been one of the pleasures about working with them. So I'm sure that this would not be an issue for them.
So the one other thing, and I'll add this on to direction to council, would be, we can feed two birds with one scone right now. We can also get a firm commitment from Vanner Tower, the scope of their responsibilities, right? Because they could come back and say, no, this isn't within, within the landlord's responsibilities or within the scope of our responsibilities for the water damage. Because I've, just by accident, I've toured that spot, and there is damage that I think is pretty extensive once we kind of peel back that first layer. So I want to make sure that either Vanner's committed to it, and if they're not and they say that's without, you know, outside of their scope, then that can play into what we do, whether we decide to lease that space or not.
I believe Miller would be able to at least give us kind of a tentative assessment on any kind of damage or anything like that that we can then feed into the process.
That will be my motion then.
Thank you. Councilmember Charette, followed by Councilmember Ibarra, followed by Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you. I think my colleague asked a lot of the questions that I was gonna ask, except I've, we're talking about basic, I like the concept, I do. As far as the parking is concerned, though, I'm not sure that that's quite as easy as everyone thinks it is just because it's on the ground floor, because it's all street parking and people are gonna still have to go into the parking structure and walk around to get to the front. There's not always parking out there on D Street or across the street, and so the parking could be somewhat of an issue. But we're talking about the $800,000 that we've already set aside, and you're planning to do all that we're talking about here with maybe slight increase to finish the carpeting, bring in furniture, do any...
The connectivity.
Dividers. It's not gonna, and I think Mr. Sanchez just asked about it. Are we really satisfied with that $800,000 number covering all that we want to do there? For the ninth floor, I think you're including that in the ninth floor too because it's generally make, move-in ready.
Correct.
So those are some of my questions. I agree that we need to maybe have a little more solid estimate of exactly what everything's gonna cost us from an architectural firm, and know, and know what the furniture's gonna be, and know all those costs, and have a breakdown for the whole thing. I like the idea. My question is, the big question is, if it's not seven years, what is it? It's not gonna be month-to-month, is it gonna be a one year, is it gonna be a two-year? What, if it's not seven years, what is it?
It's added to our existing lease, and I believe our existing lease is month-to-month. I will have to...
We don't know that?
Wait, I will confirm.
We should know that, I think.
I will confirm.
Yeah, I think we should know whether we're locked in here or there.
We have a termination requirement, but there is no time establishment in our existing lease. We don't have a termination date, but I know we have a requirement to notify them, so I'll confirm what that notification costs us.
We certainly need to know that, and again, if...
And it would be not, it would not be any different than our current existing lease.
Okay, but again, I'd question somebody wanting to have us do this and take over that much space and not have a longer lease. And month-to-month sounds like a pretty good deal. And two-ten a foot, I think is very good for office space in downtown.
Yes.
And it'd be worth probably three times that if we can do what we want to do with the downtown area and with City Hall and with other areas in there in that 300-acre area. So I'm all about the one-stop shop, I love it, the concept, and I just want some more questions on it, but I think, I think the direction we're giving you is that certainly we're all interested or we're interested in it, but we need a little bit more detailed information.
And that's exactly what this item was for, to bring this concept to you, and we would get more detailed cost estimates and bring that back at a future time. We just didn't want to go down that route without getting the direction from council first that you were interested. I did also want to point out that the initial one-stop-shop plan was also to relocate the planning commission area, and it was to take over that and use it for permitting space and then relocate the planning commission to the multipurpose room, which is also used by staff, which also creates more of a constraint for staff time and flexibility for their office space. So I just wanted to make sure that I didn't lose sight of mentioning that.
And I forgot to ask this question. We're obviously taking quite a bit of space out of our usage, out of the 201 building. Are we talking, have we been talking about the 201 building too and what we're gonna do with that and how we're gonna utilize that?
Yes, there are a few items that with that...
We haven't, we haven't talked about it here openly, right? I mean, over the years, I know we have, but I don't think that, and that certainly dovetails with what we're doing here.
Yes, and we do have additional space needs to where, twofold, in the city clerk's office that is combined with business registration, there are needs for the city clerk's office. They don't have a conference room and they do need more office space. If we were to be able to relocate business registration to this one-stop-shop area in the 101A location, that would free up more space for the city clerk's office. In the 201B building, we've actually just pulled plans out of the old City Hall and we're utilizing another space down the street in the old restaurant building. We would have more space in the actual building where they conduct work to have more storage space for those plans and so forth. So there are additional space needs across the board that this could make our jobs and work product more efficient and effective. So that's where staff sees it is a cost to the city, but because it is not an exorbitant amount of money in, or in consideration to other office space costs, that it's relatively low and an opportunity for us to expand.
And though I'm not a builder or developer, I've talked to a number of them over my career, and they'll pay double for faster speed. So if we're more efficient, there's a cost analysis, it's cost-benefit analysis. So if we're spending money to benefit our community and benefit the building, particularly the developers and the building community, they'll probably kick in. They'd probably kick into some of our budgeting because if we can give them some 30-day turnaround or some guaranteed times for approving plans and getting things done, I've heard it more than a few times that they'd be willing to pay double and triple sometimes. And I think everyone realizes that. And I'm not speaking on their behalf, they're probably gonna be, my phone will be ringing tomorrow saying, what are you talking about?
I was just gonna actually add that at the time this was first looked at, I was just updated that there was some community outreach during that time and getting some community input. And I know even since I've started the business community, before I started even, I have heard how much the community, the development community really wants a better location and better customer service to, across the board, everything that, I'm sorry, Lynn wants to add something, go ahead.
Well, I just want to add, I usually eat my lunch out by the fountain, and I can't tell you how many times people come looking for City Hall and wander through there, and it really is a maze, and if we can concentrate all of this effort into one location, the efficiency and effectiveness of all of the divisions. In my side, it's the land, land use division that is involved. To be able to have people that don't have to go up and downstairs and get this, it will make a significant difference in the city and the development community.
I'm all about the one-stop shop. We've been talking about it for as long as I've been here, and I'd love to see something come to fruition, believe me, and so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. No, thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Ibarra, followed by Councilmember Ortiz.
Yes, thank you. So I've been, I do my math, and just Suite 1A will be the $92,000 a year for that space alone. Combine that with the 900, we're looking at $265 approximately per year for those two floors or those two locations. I know in the past, we have been talking about getting back into City Hall, that's since I, way before I came into office, that's been the number-one concern with a lot of the residents. They love that, that building. And to have had Mr. Pelley's son out here, Rafael, last May was a really nice feeling for not only those of us who were there, but for the employees, because a lot of the employees remember City Hall. We had everything at City Hall. When I first moved into the city, I had the water department there, the City Hall meeting, the council meetings were held there. Every department was at City Hall. And now we are all just being separated. And when you guys are talking about moving the one-stop shop from the 201 building, which is our city-owned property, into the veneer and we're paying them rent when we have our own properties that we can use, I think it's not... paying them rent when we have our own properties that we can use, I, I think it's not physically, fiscally responsible for our city to be doing this, especially when we have a huge building like City Hall that we are, have been working on trying to renovate and reuse back. So that's where I, I stand. The concept is great. I don't mind, you know, getting bigger offices. Who wouldn't want a bigger office, right? Cubicle versus an office that where you can be on your own, have some privacy, I'm assuming. But, but right now, if we can also come back and talk about options for City Hall, I think that's something that our residents and our businesses also deserve to hear about, because we're just talking about paying our, our money into another entity, instead of bringing it back into our own city. That's, that's where I stand. And, and when you mentioned about visiting the ninth floor, it's like, well, why are we expanding? And just so you guys know, and it's not even factoring here, to move staff around, it also costs money. And, and this is not factored into these figures. And I know last time when we had to downgrade, I think it was during COVID, we downgraded from in 2019, right? We downgraded, we, we had to relocate offices, and then we upgraded back to the third floor, and we had to move again. All of that costs money. And it's something that we all have to factor in when we talk about these ideas. The money's there, the ideas are there, but let's work with what we also have. Let's not ignore our City Hall. And, you know, I don't, I don't want to miss the opportunity to work with, with Mr. Cesar Pelley's son in renovating our City Hall.
To clarify, that's why I brought up the fact that I didn't want to recommend the seven year lease option, which would save us money on the move in cost. But we do want to bring an item back. We're targeting March, which is, you know, just the month after next, April at the latest, to come back with a workshop to council, to bring back that contract for Pelley Clark and talk about the different options that we want to look at moving forward. I know that Lynn has renegotiated some options with them in the, from the initial contract, to come back and evaluate different options from the very bare, basic necessity, through what we were discussing previously back in May.
Correct. And I remember every city
So that is absolutely coming forward to council.
Yeah, and every city manager that we've had, we always talked about City Hall, City Hall. What can we do? We can resell it, we can tear it down, rebuild it, sell it off to an investor. We've always had those conversations, but nobody's ever come back to us with those figures. So we've never really had a, a final decision on what to do with City Hall. But personally, for me, and what I hear from the community, we, we have to get back into City Hall. That is, that is what I hear a lot in the community, especially people that are very attached to the city historically. That's something that they want to see.
And absolutely, I can say our staff is very excited as well. Our one, one on the, up here right now, that was formerly in that building, and I, I do remember as well. So if Lynn wanted to add anything to that, but I
Well, just, just to add that one of the things that we've asked Pelley Clark, Gruen team to do, is they've actually come back to us with a, with a proposal that will evaluate the, the necessary remodeling that needs to be done to the city to deal with the seismic. There's also the facade, because the facade is, you know, does not meet current Title 24 energy requirements. And if you were in that building in the summer, it, it was pretty warm, especially on the west side of the building. But that's part of what we have asked them to re-scope, is to give this council a, a range of what they can do from simply being a, what can we, what do we can do cheaply, minimally, to get back in there, all the way up to state of the art, bring that building back, that it's a 50 year building, and that it's, that it's functional. So when we, when we come to you, I think you're going to be very pleased and excited about what we're, what we're bringing forward.
I think our staff too, because they, they all wrote on a chalkboard that's right there at the chambers, how they want to go back to City Hall. It's, it's, it's something that's fond to a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Ortiz?
So I, you know, to Councilwoman Ibarra's points, and Councilman Sanchez and, and Charette, you know, two things can be true at once. And I think that's where we, we are at, is where we do have a, a very dire desire to get back into City Hall, as, you know, a council, a staff, and as a community. And then two, at the same time, to create an extraordinary level of service, of which our business community, I know, last year, one of the highest touting was the, the expansion and the, and the amount of money we were bringing in economic development and new businesses. And so I, while I do always understand the cost, what I understand is the investment. And I think that's really what we've brought here today, which I, I very much appreciate, is investing into the people that invest into us. And I, I fully support what everybody's saying as far as the, the obligation. I don't want us to be locked in, like, just, to Fred's point, like, don't tell anybody what type of lease we got. Just be quiet and, and get it in. And I appreciate Councilman Sanchez bringing the, the concern about the condition of first floor, because I, I wasn't so sure where we were with the ninth. But hearing what he says makes me feel like that the necessity for staff to be moved from that position while it's being, you know, whatever, cleaned, whatever they need to do, and allow them to be on the third floor and create that access on the ninth, just gives me more of a, a support and wanting to support that. So I, I do thank you for what you're doing. And, and I, the, the greatest thing that you can bring back are all of these numbers. I think that's, that's going to be super awesome. So I would like to make a motion to direct council to connect with Miller for the additional assessment, to direct the city manager to, and I don't know if you need the city attorney for this, but however it works, to get the, the contract terms and conditions for the veneer tower obligations, for all of the maintenance, as, as well as formalize whatever our current leasing terms are. And then bring that back. Oh, was it a substitute? Did you make a motion?
I made a motion, exactly what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, well, I support your motion. And then, do we have when we were bringing it back?
Oh, yes. You want to add a date?
Yeah, please. I'd like, because I'd like this to happen. And, 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 and thank you, because, you know, this was on the books for years, and someone decided that this wasn't then our future. And so I would like, can we do this in a, a meeting or two? Or what do you, what do you think, Lynn?
I would say probably it'd take us until the second meeting in, in February, at minimum. We need to talk to Miller Architects, get them out there, get walked through the building. We will ask them to look at any potential hazardous materials, yes, and, you know, and, and deal with that. And I think we may have a expiration date that we also need to address. So we're going to need to probably do a contract extension with Miller as well. That'll have to come to you. So give us, give us about 30 days to bring this back to you and
When's your expiration for Miller?
Looks like April 6.
Okay. And so the, the, the amount, we don't need to make a, a budget amendment? We don't, it's not a fiscal action?
No, it would just be a, no cost extension if they were amenable to it.
And there's no, there's no extensions that can be carried out by the, executed by the city manager?
I don't know what the specific language in the RFP and what, and what their contract is. But again, they are, they are pretty easy to work with and, and are dedicated to the community. So I'm sure we'll be able to get, get it moving forward.
So can you add a date to your amendment?
Yeah. You said that by second meeting in February?
I think that's a reasonable number, reasonable date for us to work towards.
And for whatever reason, Miller can't, can't do it, or whatever,
We will advise you.
If you could just let the council know.
Yeah, we'll advise through the city manager.
Wonderful. All right, thank you.
All right, then a second. Thank you.
Thank you. Can, Madam Secretary, can you repeat all the motions so we're clear?
Yes. So it's directs to have Miller Architect determine a cost estimate to implement the one stop shop on the first, first floor of Vanner, and identify the contract terms and conditions for the obligations for maintenance, and return to the mayor and city council at the second meeting in February.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion and a second?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra is absent for this item. Councilmember Figuera?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. We will move on to item 30, unaudited fiscal year 2023, 24 year end update general fund financial update. Could we begin with staff's presentation?
Thank you, mayor members of the council. I would like to invite our finance director, Jeanne, up to provide this presentation.
If we can just have a moment when IT comes back to pull up our presentation.
We still have a quorum?
Yeah.
Okay, we're, we're safe. Please continue. I'm sorry, but, do you guys want a quick five minute break? Just so if, it sounds like council wants some break, or you guys are good to keep going? Good? Okay. All right, continue.
Okay. Good evening, again, mayor, mayor pro tem, city council. Before you is our staff report, trying to give you an update as how we ended our fiscal year 23, 24. And this is for our general fund. Again, our goal is to make sure that we always align with the council's strategic goals and budget. And fiscal stability is being our first one, which is improved operational and financial capacity. So we wanted to give just a quick view on our revenue highlights. So our utility usage tax exceeded the budget by 7.7 million. Our licenses and permits also exceeded the budget by 3.2 million, and our investment income revenues totaled 3.4 million. So this is just a quick graph that can tell you what our budget was, which was, those in blue, and what our actuals were, which is in orange. And as you can see, most of our categories did exceed our budget. Okay, then for our expenditure highlights, we actually total came in 10% below our budget at 196. And most of our savings were due to salary savings. And our measure S capital projects, they total, total expenditures were about 7 million, and we had a budgeted amount of 33.9. But with the way our capital projects were, if they still have them in progress and they don't complete it, those budgets are carried over, so they can continue those projects in the next fiscal year. I, I was missing a graph, but to continue to fund balance, I don't know if this is clear enough for everyone to see. However, the first, the first column that we have is our actual fund balance for 22, 23. So that year, we actually ended our fund balance with 173 million. The standard reserve requirement is 16% or two months of operating expenditures. And our requirement is 25%. So our 25% is normally around 50 million, but we actually ended up with 173. So that's three times more than what we do. So that was in '23. Now, when Ms. Whitehorn came in April of last year, we had projected at the time, our revenues are expense, that we were going to increase that 173 million reserve by 11 million. So now our unaudited actuals came in, which is our third column, we did not increase it by 11.8, we actually increased it by 29 million. So now our fund balance is 200 million. That is actually 100% of our operating expenditures. That's a yay. I just wanted the city to know we're doing very well. So that's how we actually ended our year for 23, 24. And we did put a, a projection, now this is just against our adopted for the current year, we were estimating it would go down to 198. However, that was again based on adopted. As the city manager mentioned, when we come back for the mid-year report, which would be in a month or two, we would now be providing current year estimates, and, and see how that affects our fund balance. But still, at 198, we're still very close to our actual expenditures for the year. That concludes our report. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
And I'll just add on a little more, just to put some emphasis on the 29 million surplus that we are ending the last fiscal year that will go back into our reserve and our fund balance. Our revenues came in higher than we projected, so we are in a good, stable position. I also wanted to just present this to, to the council and community, even though we don't have the audited financial statements, we will be bringing those forward by, likely by February. We will finalize the, the audited, this is the unaudited. So the audited will, could vary slightly by just post closing, you know, entries. But the, the emphasis on that 29 million is really tremendous for the city. It plays into our stability in our revenues. I know that we have a great economic development team that is really moving forward, and we've talked about businesses coming online. So we are looking good, and we just want to keep that trajectory. I also wanted to make just a clarifying statement to what I presented with the budget when it was adopted. I came in and did not have enough time to evaluate what was in our budget, how it previously been presented by the former finance director. At that time, was presented a two year budget. I asked you to please only adopt a one year budget, give us time to come back. I did say give us a quarter to come back and, and provide that information. And I know I've talked about this in some previous meetings, that we will be coming back, rather than at the first, you know, giving us that quarter, we'll come back at mid-year. At that time in June, when I was about six weeks in, maybe eight weeks into being with the city, I did not realize all of the work that was coming up with the ARPA awards. But, oh my gosh, it's been a, a great six months moving forward with the team, just, I feel like creating miracles with how much we've been working with all of the processes and our, you know, our staffing to move all these big, big projects forward. But we've reached the finish line. We awarded everything by December 31. And, and as Councilman Sanchez said, the hard work is coming up next, and, and putting those projects into, bringing them into fruition. Both, they, those are great projects for our systems coming up, our improving our software inefficiencies for staff and the public, our major infrastructure projects that are coming forward. So looking forward to a great, busy, busy year. But I really wanted to emphasize what the good stability of our, of our revenue stream is and our budget status. And, and also that we are continuing forward with that, you know, presentation in the format I mentioned before on the workshop status and bringing, going forward in, in perpetuity. Staff will be coming back with regular workshops at the budget time. At the mid-year, we wouldn't typically have a workshop, but we do want to bring it back at this time, because we're revamping our budget and presenting basically a restructure of the budget. So we will be bringing that with the mid-year. And I know Jeanne wants to add one more.
I, I would just like to add one more thing. And it is great that we are adding 29 million to our reserve. But of course, it is up to council, should they decide if they wanted to direct this to projects or activities now, within the current year, I would just like to caution, and we should always remind you, and please remember, I am very conservative, the 29 million is a one time. This is not an annual, this is not something, we would love to get 29 million every year, but we, we may, and we may not. So should city council decide that they would like to provide direction that these be used, I, I would look to one time, projects, programs, right, CIP, whatever the city council desires.
And I'll add to that, since she opened up that, that topic, that we do have a lot of projects in the books, or on the books right now, and the 50 million that we just awarded, that we really need to work towards spending. And we need to spend our funding that has commitment expenditure timelines, rather than our regular general fund money. So just to add that to the, to that topic.
Thank you so, so much. And that is just fantastic news. To, big round of applause, please. We are in a really good, stable fiscal, fiscal health. And thank you so much, staff, for working so hard. And, and, and thank you colleagues for your, you know, your diligence and making sure we are fiscally healthy. And that's very, very important, especially someone who lived through the bankruptcy. It is so, so, we need to be very mindful how we move forward into the future, sustain ourselves. I will start with Councilmember Charette, followed by Councilmember Sanchez, followed by Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you. My only comments is
My only comments is, you've all known me to be pretty direct, and I think what, and I, the mayor, I think, just basically said it in those words, that we are in good financial condition. There was concerns that we were not, and, and I think we were close, and it's obviously come out better than we hoped, and, and, but that also goes to the efficiency, that goes to the hard work of staff and everybody being diligent, and we do have to always be careful. We're fiscally sound, we're not wealthy, and, you know, just things like the one-stop-shop, as I talked earlier. If we are really efficient with, with builders and developers and invite people back into our community, because there's so much opportunity here, and we all know it, we've all talked about it, the opportunity exists here, and, and it has been perceived as someplace that people didn't want to come to, to work. And if we're sound, and I see our, our new council working well together, and we are on our toes and continue to improve efficiencies, there's no reason why we can't get to that $490 million cap that we have to go to. Who do we go to to increase that? The federal government or somebody? Whatever, whatever. There's, there's no reason why, and someone spoke earlier, what are we doing to grow this community? This is a big community, so I'm not sure we need to grow in population. We need to grow it in terms of amenities and, and quality of life in this community. We're positioned perfectly, graphically, geographically to really do something, and there's no reason why this city shouldn't be the shining city on the hill. And again, my hat's off to all the staff that's brought this good news back, and, and we'll just keep a close tab on it. I just want to make sure there are people out there that still don't understand or believe that we're fiscally sound. They've, they've talked at the council, I mean, at the council diocese comments, they've said things about, well, you're in a deficit, or where's that deficit? You know, they make these comments that are not accurate, and this is something we should make sure we get out to the community and that they all understand that we are fiscally sound, not rich, not wealthy, don't, we're not going to pave the streets in gold yet, yet, but, but we are, we are on, on the upswing, and I think we can do it. There's other options and other opportunities that are going to be coming forward over the next, you know, year and few years, so we just got to keep our nose to the grind show, but thank you very much for the good report.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, something Genie said that is critically important. Let's, let's invest in one-time costs, because what we've done in the past is that we've burdened the city with ongoing costs, its personnel, and those don't go away when the revenues drop. And so with that said, can you remind us how many full-time equivalent vacancies we have right now? I think it's a little over 100.
It's approximately 100.
Okay. And what are the cost savings from those vacancies?
I don't recall that number. We looked at it recently, but we don't have it in front of us, so we can get that information to council.
Uh huh, because I know that in the last year and a half, the last 18 months, we brought on 166 new positions into the city, and there was a major increase in operating costs, and it went like this. Our, our reserves and our fund balance started here, our operating costs were here, and this is what's been happening every year. This year, they kind of met up. The reason is increased in, or rather, better-than-expected revenue projection, or better-than-expected revenues from what we projected.
Yes.
But there also, I think we need to take into account that 100 vacancies has produced, I know we looked at the numbers, they're in excess of $10 million because of the vacancies. So if all those positions were filled that the council had directed staff to fill, that number, that 29 million, would not be anywhere near that. So we have to take into account, so right now, when we hear 29 million, please, council, remember this moment, don't say, oh, let's hire 50 more cops, let's bring in 50 more city hall employees, because we are, with all the positions filled, nowhere near that $29 million in fund balance.
No, no, Councilmember.
And I'll just add that we are evaluating, and I know I've said this previously when I've talked about, we had 157 vacant positions previously when I talked about doing some changes to staffing. We have, we're moving forward, and we was just recently awarded our classification and compensation study. We are significantly under market in a lot of our positions. So we are constantly throughout the year, at, at all times, at approximately 100 vacancy factor. So we need to right-size our staffing model, our classification and compensation model, because we do have some positions that don't quite make sense, they're under market, we can't ever keep them filled because they're not to the right spec. So we're going to have that evaluation, we're going to come back with a complete, well, I should say, we, the consultant will complete the study and come back with recommendations that we can evaluate to look at making significant adjustments that we can right-size, because we are still operating even with that 100 vacancy factor at all times. So the good, the example that we've been looking at most recently, really scrutinizing, is our code enforcement division. That's what has been historically recommended to increase code enforcement. We have adequate staffing, we actually have a large staff, but it's looking at the staffing model. Right now, our staffing model isn't as it should be, and I don't want to get into too much detail right now because that's not what we're talking about, but we will be bringing that back, and we're evaluating what staffing model makes sense, and it's just making some adjustments that could make us more efficient, and we will be absolutely taking that in consideration. Councilman Sanchez, great comment, and that is absolutely being evaluated by staff and our total staffing model to make sure our staffing model is sustainable.
So that reinforces what I'm saying, because I don't think what the city manager means is that with the assessments, the comp and class studies, that we're going to decrease anyone's pay. There will be an increase, and it will account for a couple million dollars in our annual operating budget. So with that, and as we restructure and fill some of these positions, eliminate some of these positions, those, those amounts will continue to increase, and the operating budget will continue to press up against those revenues. So we have to make sure that, because I, Councilmember, and I, I'm going to repeat this because we are veterans in this, Councilmember Figueroa, Councilmember Charette, Councilmember Ibarra, and myself, it's not that long ago, when we were here and we were figuring out which departments we could slash by up to 20%, I mean, we got rid of our offices, and I don't ever want to be there again, and our, our prudence, the sales tax measure S, which Terry Ledoux brought back almost single-handedly, saved this city. And so we have to make sure that we don't squander that opportunity. So those 29 million, you know, it's less, but I think we need to refocus on the tree trimming, which I know was drastically cut, street repairs, which was drastically cut, and streetlights. All those look like they're coming back through grant funding in many ways, a lot of that is ARPA, but we have to make sure that we're using our Measure S sales tax and our general fund to prioritize these projects, because the people watching at home, they hear, all right, more staff at city hall, good, but is that going to get my street repaved? Is that going to get the tree trimmed or the streetlights back on? So with that, let's, it's a, it's a very optimistic but cautious round of applause for what staff has been able to do, and I appreciate it.
And I'll just add one more to clarify my, my statement in right-sizing the classification and compensation, but also looking at, we can reduce staffing, we can reduce the staff numbers. For instance, we have a department of 20, but we can't fill it at any time because of the vacant, the, I'm sorry, the actual market rates, but we're still doing the work right now. So if we were to eliminate four positions and increase some salaries, we could still have total budget savings and still come into market. And that's what I mean about a full, comprehensive evaluation. We're always that 100 vacancy factor, so that means we can operate without those 100 positions, which gives us the budget to increase others. So really evaluating, increasing without, increasing the, the market rate on some of the classifications without adding staff or adding to the total budget.
Thank you, and appreciate you saying that, because if we are going to retain employees and talents, that's one of the biggest way that we have to address it through. And so thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Ortiz, followed by Councilmember Ibarra?
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, because in one of the conversations with Director Russell, was really looking at what a comprehensive is going to be able to do for us, class and comp, and, and people, especially coming out of COVID, the reorganization of what jobs look like, access to technology, really redefines positions in and of themselves, and so I know there is cost savings. I, now, Measure S, when we were sold on it, which is an unrestricted general fund, we did promise that we would restore PD and we would do things with it. So I, I, I support, I support hiring people that work. I, and you can go back years and years on my public comments, I'm not big on, on big positions in administrative. I really believe in bringing back people who do the day-to-day, who do the tree trimming, who do the, the road filling. And when I look at these one-time funds, which I really appreciate, I remember just, what, three, two and a half years ago, we cut $5 million out of CIP, and, and we didn't allow street paving. So it's taking these funds, and this is kind of what ARPA was for, it said, don't use it for salaries, use it for infrastructure, and, and, you know, we went with homelessness. But I want to make sure that we are giving back to the community. It, it comes when we talk about cutting costs, nobody ever gets their salaries cut, community gets services cut. We get put on the back burner, and one of the promises that this community was made when Helen and I were in city, Mayor and I were in city hall, and we were going through the bankruptcy, is if you give us this opportunity while we have failed you, and now we look dumb to the world, if you give us an opportunity to come back and build ourselves, we will give you that investment, we will give you everything that we have held you up for a decade. And that's what I would like to see, is a return on the promise, because the employees sacrificed for years, the community sacrificed for years, and what, what we have is an opportunity, and I think in looking at, and one, taking the time to get us balanced, because when this budget was presented in June last year, that was some fuzzy, not good numbers, and we all knew it didn't add up. And so I, while I was waiting for the mid-year to come back, I'm like, ooh, where is it? Where is it? I do appreciate you taking the time to do the proper allocations and accounting for the ARPA funds. I appreciate looking at this, this fund balance, because what I know is that you're taking your time to do it, and even coming back saying, hey, we've made errors, it may be a decimal, but it, it matters. And we've had 16 finance directors, 15, 14 finance directors since the bankruptcy took place in 2012, so no one was really taking account for everything because people would leave. So that fiscal responsibility is so valuable, and when you do come, even though it's been longer than I anticipated, I appreciate that, but I want to see that forensic audit, that council approved, because on top of you guys doing your own accounting and checking your numbers, we truly need that independent third party to give us that sign-off, because we've been here, to Councilman Sanchez's point, we've been here before, and we've looked good, but in 2019, we had a $9 million deficit. They were cutting, they were cutting seven across, percent across the board, and then they were looking for more. And then the next year, we had a $10 million jump. Measure S is great, but it's also on the back of the taxpayers. There's no point in giving $54 million a year in sales tax revenue to our city if we are not going to invest in the city and are going to just be playing piggyback on, on offsetting costs. So that's my spiel on accounting, but I thank you for this. I do look forward to the workshops and, and just a continuation of the level of transparency and accountability in our finances. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Excellent comments. Councilwoman Ibarra?
Yes, and I want to piggyback on a little bit of what my colleague from the first ward was mentioning about the staffing. I know throughout the years, we've been asking of the, about the vacancies. I've seen the reports that have been brought for us to readjust the salaries, and a lot of these positions are non-existent anymore, but they're still on the salary list. If there's a way that we can just remove them and not even count them as vacancies or non-existent anymore, I think I saw there, like the mayor's staff, that at one point, a former city manager had removed and asked us to remove it, and it still shows up on those reports. There's no need to have non-existing positions still showing up on those reports, therefore causing for the vacancies that we have. And that's something that we've been asking for. What are the vacancies? What we need? What have we been approving? And, and when you talk about market, market salaries, we can't do market salaries if we have these vacancies still showing, because we still have to budget for them. So hopefully that helps staff, give a little guidance on what to do for, you know, the next report on the salary ranges for different staffing that we get. That, that's all I wanted to talk about.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you. This is a receiving file, so we will, no, there's no need to vote on this item, this is a receiving file, so thank you for all of your comments, council. We will now move on to the last discussion item, and that is item number 31, and it is recommended, oh, the title is recommended the mayor, city council, the city of San Bernardino adopt resolution number 2025-021. I know this is regarding about the Violence Intervention Prevention Program. So can we have staff's presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to invite Enhelica, our Violence Intervention Prevention Coordinator, to come up and give the presentation.
I'll move to approve, just to start off. If council wants to waive the, the presentation, that's fine, but I'll, I'll go ahead and just set the, set the stage for, for motion to approve.
Can I second?
Well, hang on, I, I, there's, there is a portion, I think our community needs to hear in why we are here. I think it's valuable. I know it's a little bit on the time run, but can, would you guys be amenable to, to getting to the part where someone was allocating themselves $900,000, please?
Of course, I'll go right into the challenges, if, if that's okay with everyone.
Would that be okay?
Yes, why don't we go through the whole presentation, just so it allows the public to understand?
Not the whole thing, just, I, I really, if you're just good with giving us the violations.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
Thank you.
I'll be brief, I know that you guys still have an agenda items to go back to, so let's go back then, I mean, forward to the challenges. And let me pull my notes, because 2025 welcomed me with needing glasses, so I'll be reading from my notes. Yes, yes, yes. So the next two slides speak about the challenges that VIP program experienced and continues to experience through the Cycle Four program. The very first challenge that we have highlighted here speaks about the unauthorized allocation of $900,000 to the sole provider Victory Outreach, but it was known in the community as a VIP provider Hope Culture. I really want to highlight that. So the issue number one spoke about the Hope Culture received a $900,000 advancement, which is a violation of Section 4 of the PSA, which stipulates the VIP contract is a cost reimbursement contract only. The city notified the provider about this finding and the incorrectly advanced in a meeting in July 24, 2023. In attempted to collect the unspent amount, the provider did not comply. I also want to mention that this item and additional findings were, were notified to the provider through some memos that the provider received coming directly from the city manager on August 18, 2023, August 24, 2023, September 13, 2023, and October 27, 2023. All these three findings and additional concerns were highlighted in those memos in addition to a meeting that was held on July 24, 2023, where the city acknowledged that the money was advanced incorrectly and requested for the money back. Again, the provider did not comply. The second issue is a reimbursement violation. Hope Culture claimed 100% of an employee time for the San Bernardino contract while also claiming some time for their Chicago VIP contract, which violates the Title II Code of Federation, Section 200, 200.43's subsection Standards for Documentation for Personnel, which states that personal expenses should reasonably reflect the total activity for which an employee is compensated, and it should not exceed 100%. And the last issue that we identified with the sole provider for the Cycle Four VIP grant is that under the VIP budget for the state of Illinois, the former VIP program manager appears as a consultant for Hope Culture for fiscal year 2022, when, and that is the timeline when he was still employed with the city. And it's a, a direct conflict of interest, and it's a violation of the city rules. and it's a violation of the city rules. I believe those were the ones that you wanted me to highlight. I just simply want to say that. I also want to highlight some concerns and challenges as to why we are asking for a reduction. We do have a timeline to utilize as much money as we can. Therefore, a reduction is necessary for us to align and develop program plans for the state. The providers have until December 31, that should be a 31, 2027, for program implementation. The additional six months of the six-month extension will be only solely to complete the financial audit and the local evaluation report. We also have the dollar-to-dollar required match, which we are currently satisfying with our ARPA funding allocations, along with the $60,000 from the VIP General Operating Budget and providers' match. So those were the challenges that we were experiencing with the VIP contract. Therefore, this is why we are asking for a reduction from $3.8 million to $1.89. We were lucky that the state offered a no-cost extension just recently before the end of last year, therefore allowing us to add six months of programming, and we were able to touch, I believe, $250,000 more from the state. And I also want to thank everyone for allowing me to speak about the VIP program. I've been looking forward to this for a while.
Great job. Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz, followed by Councilmember Ibarra, did you want to speak on this item? Oh, no. Okay.
I'll come in here.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Ms. Inhaleka, because this is so important. I know we run along, but the level of accountability that needs to take place right now, it is sad to see that someone was able to commit these continued violations. So I appreciate your due diligence in being able to point this out. I really want to thank Operation New Hope and Young Visionaries and the other organizations that are taking the additional money to do the additional work. What, I know there was a motion to second, but I would like that to be a part of that motion in second, that we start receiving quarterly reports. I know that they are already turning them in, so I want them to be received and given us our updates. I think Councilwoman Ibarra is also asking for them, or maybe, I know Councilwoman Ibarra in the past and other council members have already talked about the way that we give nonprofits money, and then we feel like maybe they're not doing something. That's not what I'm saying happened in this case, but I know the two organizations that are working with us currently are doing great. But I think the community needs to see that, and we need to hold people accountable. Because the fact that $900,000 was able to just whatever, that's not okay. And then what are our remedies? Are we able, if this person was defrauding us and doing 100% to each and each, how do we recoup those funds, if possible? And that may be you or city attorney or whomever.
I just want to add that the $900,000 advancement, we're invoiced, and we do have the invoice package justifying that amount. So we have penny-to-penny expenditures from the provider. It's not that the money disappeared. So we do have, in fact, we are still reconciling the month of January this month, because our recommendation is asking to terminate the contract at the end of this month.
But how do you charge 100% to us and another 100% to another?
That item, that employee in question was not an allowable expense in the provider's budget.
So we did not lose any money, even though they were charging us 100% and another organization 100% at the same time?
We did make some corrections and hold them accountable to provide documentation to demonstrate that every bit of the $900,000 that was advanced to them was expended.
But, okay, then let me just, real quick, because I just want to...
So there were adjustments to that amount that had previously been dual-charged to two different locations.
Because you say that in one moment that there was no mishap in services, but then due to the challenges, there was a significant underspending. So, but that didn't affect the level of services?
The provider continued to provide services. We continued to receive invoice packages, and we were going through each of the packages, disallowing a lot of the expenses that we were questioning. And this is one of the ones that we were disallowing every month. We met with the provider and understood why we disallowed that item. They never invoiced that item at all.
Okay. Okay. So you double-checked their charges, and they were not given all the funding of which they were asking for at 100%?
Correct.
Thank you. I just want to make the community super, super clear, because that's not cool. And this is one of the biggest fights in our community. Measure S, Measure G was all predicated on this VIP program. And so if we're going to do it, we better do it right, and then we better hold ourselves accountable. Because for a lot of years, this program sat unfunded and unchecked, and someone was just allowed to do whatever. So thank you, guys, and keep up the good work.
And I will just give recognition to our analysts that worked through reconciling all of those and challenging those charges and bringing it to our attention. I would really like to commend our analysts that went through that process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sanchez.
I am amenable to amending my motion to include quarterly reports, so once every three months. But just one thing, we have, there has been no lapse in funding for the VIP program, my understanding, in the last six years.
There are four cycles total, and the city of San Bernardino has received one, three, and four, and the cycles overlap, so no, no. They're about to release Cycle Five, and I do want to mention that this reduction will not impact our possibility to apply that they understood our challenges, and they're patiently waiting for our modified budget.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Sharetz willing to amend the motion. Thank you, Councilwoman Ortiz, for the amendment. Please call for the votes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharet?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember, oh, motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes all of our items. We do have one more item in closed session to go back into closed session.
Should we take a polling of the council? Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we just move our last closed session item to our February, our first meeting in February, and just continue it to that.
Is there, there's a request to continue the closed session item? Is there a second to that, or would we like to go into closed session to wrap this up?
I can maybe help you phrase that in a positive way, because your rules require you to extend your meeting past nine o'clock.
Yes, so council would...
So if someone wants to do it, then they would need to make a motion to extend past nine.
Is there councils, you know?
The cutoff is 10 o'clock, right?
Nine o'clock. Oh, 10 o'clock, I'm sorry.
10 o'clock.
But an hour before, you have to make a motion to extend.
By 9:30.
But you may be in there, so this would be a time to...
Yeah, it shouldn't take longer than half an hour. Let's get it done.
I just want to make sure.
Okay, so we will go into closed session at 9:05 PM. Thank you.
Can we, can we maybe do council announcements? Should we do?
Council wants to do their announcement right now before we go closed session. Okay.
While people are still watching.
Is there? All right, Councilwoman Ibarra?
Yes, I just found out yesterday that a resident and a small business owner, very influential in our community, Hispanic female, my age, is no longer with us. She was killed. I believe she was targeted. And so I'd like to, in memory of her, I'd like to end our meeting in silence in her memory. Jessica Torres. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Canas?
I'll be brief. I just wanted, one, say thank you to all of our city staff for all your hard work. I greatly appreciate it. I want to encourage everyone out there, as was mentioned before by, with the city manager updates, to apply for commissions. It is desperately needed. It is a service to the city, and to help move the city forward and rebuild, we do need more help. So please apply for commission appointments. It is right on the city's homepage. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sanchez?
Yes, I was notified, a longtime Westside resident residing in the First Ward, Mercedes Flores Rocha passed away recently. She was 91 years of age, a lifelong resident of San Bernardino, passed on January 3, 2025. Alongside her children, sister, and family members, affectionately known as Mercy, she is survived by her four children, 11 grandchildren, 13 great-grandchildren, two sisters, and a host of nieces and nephews. Mercy was a member of Our Lady of Guadalupe Church and was active in her social outreach programs wherever she could lend a hand. Mercy's contributions in the programs touched many residents in the Westside communities. She was a fluent Spanish speaker. Mercy also enrolled in the ESL classes at the Home and Neighborhood Service, where she also ventured into guitar and quilting lessons. She was a positive role model to her family and a positive influence in her community. Her absence will be sorely missed by many people. I'm asking if we can take a moment of silence and close in her memory, as well as Jessica. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Well, I guess we'll just dedicate, I would like to dedicate, I know we've had some staff lose some family. And so I know at the heart of the city, if we could just dedicate as well to our staff that have lost, that's been a big thing. The other thing is for the commissions, I've received a really good outpouring of applications. So if you are still interested, I'm doing my final review Friday. And so please email them in so I can make my final selections. And then, also, I attended the school board meeting last night. They have reestablished their bridge committee, and so this is an opportunity. I definitely want to be on it. And for all, any and all council members, city manager, please, let's do this, because, you know, we all live and work here, and the reflection of what's happening on the streets, you know, pours into the schools. And so I was really, really excited for that. And that's all I got. Oh, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Figueroa?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year.
April 10.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you, though. Yes, definitely for commission opportunities, please send those in. I also have an opportunity to be reviewing some of those, some of those boards as well. I had some other announcements to make, too, but I'm going to refrain from making them. I was planning a community meeting next month, but I'm going to have to make some changes to that. So once that's finalized, I'll bring that back and make those announcements when appropriate. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flores?
Happy New Year. And then, given what's been going on in LA and recently, two fires in San Bernardino, I want to thank all the first responders, especially our fire department, for their continuous effort to keeping our community safe. In that note, I want to thank the Delman Heights Neighborhood Association in conjunction with True Light Community Fellowship for opening their doors and providing warm meals to those affected by the power outages. If you or someone you know needs a warm meal, please visit the Delman Heights Neighborhood Association tomorrow from 4 to 7 p.m. at 2972 North California Street.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sharet?
Yeah, thank you. Because of the new year, we haven't started any new community meetings, so I haven't attended anything since the holidays. I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. And I just want to tell people out there that I have seen a change in this council in just the last few weeks. The first meeting we had, tonight's meeting, and we've had some closed session meetings. And I am very optimistic about how this council, with my new colleagues, and congratulate you to all of you for your election, and looking forward to working with you this year. I am very optimistic right now about the working relationship that this council has and is going to have in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I really echo the same comments and statements that my colleagues have mentioned regarding about those who've been lost in the community. Thank you, staff, and also the fire personnel. Thank you. And also really emphasize the importance of participating as commissioners. Please, please do apply, because we all need you to engage into the process so we can hear your input, be part of the process, be part of the buy-in, so we could develop our city beautifully into the future. I would like to add and say, take a moment to recognize two extraordinary individuals who have dedicated their careers to the city of San Bernardino. Gary Hoffner with incredible 40 years of service, and Tracy Parker with 25 years of dedication. Both have made lasting contributions to our city and its residents. Their commitment and hard work have shaped San Bernardino in countless ways. On behalf of myself and the entire city council and our community, we thank you for your service and wish you both very best in your well-deserved and earned retirements. And I also want to mention that we have a very, very important point in time count next week. Please, please do volunteer. We have the largest county unhoused in the county of San Bernardino, largest county landmass wise in our country. And we do have a crisis in that area. Please do sign up to volunteer. That is next Thursday, 5:15 a.m. to 10 a.m., just a few hours of your time to dedicate to help us count the unhoused in this city, in this county. Please do sign up. I recently had the honor of attending the Rodel Fellowship Class of 2025 for the state of California. I was one of 24. I was also joined by our district attorney, Jason Anderson, a fellow mayor in Riverside. This was an incredible opportunity to engage with leaders from across the state in meaningful discussion about governance, ethics, and public service. This was all paid for by the Rodel Institute, so it was an honor to be selected amongst the 24 electives in the state of California. So thank you, Rodel, for selecting for my participation. That's pretty much it. So thank you so much to staff. Again, we all recognize your hard work, and thank you for your dedication and commitment to really help transform this city beautifully into the future and sustain ourselves, and really show the residents that we're here to serve meaningfully and thoughtfully and impactfully. So thank you so much. We would now go into closed session at 9:13 p.m. So good night, everyone. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to close the meeting? Actually, before we go into closed session, we'd like to take a moment of silence for Jessica Torres and Mercedes Flores Rocha, and actually, the senior points who have lost loved ones. Please, let's take a moment of silence right now.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. We're back out from closed session, and the time is 10:31? 10:29, I'm sorry. The next, the meeting's adjourned. The next joint regular meeting of the Mayor and City Council, and the Mayor and City Council Acting as the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, and the Mayor and City Council Acting as the San Bernardino City Housing Authority, and Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, Acting as the San Bernardino Joint Powers Finance Authority, will adjourn to the regular meeting to be held on February 5, 2025, at the Feltheim Central Library located at 555 West Sixth Street, San Bernardino, California, 92401. Closed session will begin at 4 p.m. and